Good evening. I'd like to call the May 11, 2023 meeting of the Greenville City Council at work. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Robinson for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, thank you. Hope you will join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight, and thank you for this wonderful, beautiful day and the weather you've given all of us. Lord, we ask for patience and discernment that as we consider the matters that come before us, we make decisions that serve not just a select few, but serve all the citizens of Greenville as we make our progress. We ask you bless those who are less fortunate than we are today. And as we celebrate Mother's Day's weekend, those who are traveling, we ask you bless those to be safe. And those who are missing their mothers for the first time, we ask you of special peace and comfort to those. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I'm standing in front of you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protam Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly of a court.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening.
Move to approve.
All right, motion has been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers.
All right. Anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay, yes, sir. Affordable Housing Loan Committee, Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm going to continue that.
Okay. Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to appoint Karen Ziff.
Have a quiet second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Ziff.
Emmanuel, you're going to be replaced.
Next is the Housing Authority, Mayor Protam Glover.
Um.
Luke Stavish.
I'll continue.
Okay. Human Relations Council, Mayor Protam Glover.
Uh, I'll continue.
Okay. Multimodal Transportation Commission, Councilmember Robinson.
Pass that, be continued, please.
Yes, sir. Police Community Relations Committee, Mayor Protam Glover, that's a direct appointment.
Um, I don't hear anyone.
Okay. Recreation and Parks Commission, there's two for Councilmember Daniels, Keyvon Gaynor and Najaya Lewis.
I'd like to reappoint them both, please.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Gaynor and Ms. Lewis.
And finally, we have the Youth Council, Mayor Protam Glover.
I'll continue.
Okay, that concludes the appointments. Mayor Connolly.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each with a total for each side and no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I'd like to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreement verbally or by applause as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item two is an ordinance to annex Barrington Field, Section Three, property involving a total of 5.0606063 acres located along the western right-of-way of Frog Level Road at the current terminus of Barrington Drive. Chris Kelly with the Planning Department has the presentation. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the western right-of-way of Frog Level Road and at the current terminus of Barrington Drive. For reference, this map shows the current city limits in green and the requested annexation in red. This property is located in the Swift Creek watershed. The property is also located in the primary service area in the tiered growth map and is located in City Council Voting District Number Two. This property is anticipated yield 12 single-family lots with an anticipated tax value of $3.17 million. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
I didn't. I totally did.
All right, seen none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or motion?
Motion to approve, item number two.
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. Any discussion?
Just a quick question for staff. If you could show the slide that shows the areas that are part of the city, so the ones in green are part of the city and the others are still part of the county?
They are in our ETJ.
In the ETJ, okay. And I guess, you know, when you're looking at an area like this that's traditionally been very rural and it begins to develop and parts begin to annex, we can expect it to have this kind of patchwork appearance for a while. Does that sound right?
Yes. I suppose so, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Motion has been made, properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Item number three, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Item three is an ordinance to annex the Joseph and Lily Bland property involving a total of 9.0716 acres located along the southern right-of-way of Darrell Drive and east of Len Drive. Again, Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the southern right-of-way of Darrell Drive and 280 feet east of Len Drive. This property is located in the Swift Creek watershed, and it will require 25-year detention. The property is also located in the primary service area on the tiered growth map and is located in the City Council Voting District Number Five. This property's anticipated development is one single-family lot with an anticipated tax value of $250,000. I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Councilmember Blackburn?
This is kind of a follow-up to the previous question. If you could go back to the slide showing this area, yes. So when you've got this one neighborhood that's already existing that is part of the county, this does put neighborhoods that are part of the city adjacent to a neighborhood to a neighborhood that's going to, that's part of the county. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And my understanding is that in the last, I don't know, I guess, decade or so, in order to become part of the city, they would actually have to petition themselves to be annexed. We can't annex them.
That is correct. There is no longer any involuntary annexation in North Carolina. In order to be part of the city, they would, the whole subdivision would have to agree to be part of the city and petition for annexation.
Okay. I'm just thinking about differences in the characteristics of neighborhoods that are side by side and, you know, how that, how that would work. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
No to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item four.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we move on to item four, I wish that council would join me and congratulate Mr. Kelly in his recent graduation from East Carolina with a master's in public administration.[707.36][707.36](applause) Okay, transitioning on to business.
Here's to, here's to the MPA from ECU.
Item four is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the regulations for tobacco shops in that no tobacco shop Class II shall be located within one-half a mile of the radius of a tobacco shop Class I or a tobacco shop Class II. Chief Planner Shante Gooby has that presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is an item that's really more of a housekeeping item more than anything. You're probably going to learn a little bit more about tobacco shops than what you ever thought you ever needed to know. Back in 2013, council passed some regulations related to tobacco shops. These were basically stores that sold tobacco, similar products, et cetera. Prior to that, we were calling them a convention, a convention, I'm sorry, a convenience store. So the two uses were established. There was a Class I, which sold tobacco and similar products, and then there was a Class II that could sell tobacco, similar products, but they could also sell what we would call a smoking apparatus, a hookah, water pipe, something along those lines. So a Class I is considered less intensive than a Class II, so therefore the Class II's have more stringent standards. And at the adoption of those standards, the intent was not to allow a Class II to be located within a half-mile of either a Class I or another Class II. So you have here in front of you, these are the current standards for a Class I. The current language is shown in black, and so the red is showing you the new language, and it just clearly says, "No tobacco shop. Class I shall be located within a half-mile radius of a Class II." And then under the Class II, again, the current language is shown in black, and then what we've done is for number one, we've just struck an existing or approved tobacco shop. Again, just making that clear, the intent is to have a separation. I'll go ahead and just tell you just a little bit more about a Class II, and that also is, it cannot be within 500 feet of an existing single-family dwelling, a single-family zoning district, school, church, park, multifamily. Number three just tells you how to measure, and then number four is it cannot be located within a certified redevelopment area. This map is just showing you the current tobacco shops that we have in the city. So these are your Class I's. They're shown in red. We have 20 of them. Class II's are shown in blue. Those, we have seven of those. The dots do not indicate the scale, so I don't want you to think because they're close together that, that there's, there's a problem. This is simply just showing you the location within the city. Again, this is just to add more clarity. Staff recommends approval of the requests is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, specifically Chapter Four and Policy 4.31, which says, "Modernize and diversify the local economy. Support the growth of a variety of employment opportunities and businesses that diversify Greenville's economy. Provides workers with a range of skill sets and training, and encourage business growth to expand and diversify the tax base." And at the April 18, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission, they unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Gooby. Councilmember Smiley?
Does this actually affect the map at all or just make it easier to administer the rule?
That is all, it's just adding clarity within the rules. It does not change this map.
That was my question. I was just wondering if anyone was at risk of being shut down?
No, we're, we're not negatively impacting any existing business at all. Again, this is just to clean up the language, to make it simpler for staff, and then for anyone else, a layperson, just making it clear.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Blackburn?
My question is not related to, to this specific ordinance, but I am wondering about, they have very vivid lighting, a lot of these tobacco shops, and is there any regulation that applies to that, or should there be any regulation that applies to that?
We do have some regulations. What has happened is over the last, I would say, two to three years, a lot of the lighting has went to LED lighting. It's a lot cheaper. It requires a lot less energy, but they're very bright. So one of the things that we have done is with special use permits, more recent special use permits, we've added conditions such as they can't use LED lights. We also do have some lighting standards that we can use as well because, you know, we don't want lights to be a hazard to traffic. We don't want people blinded by it. So we've got some standards in place. If we do find that the lights are getting a little bright, but the newer ones, we have not allowed LED lights.
But the, but the existing businesses are grandfathered in?
Some of them, yes, went to LED.
Okay. And, and there's nothing to do to regulate those lights?
Other than, again, some, some standards as far as if they're blinding, if it's interfering with traffic, something along those lines. Staff will be happy to take a look.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Gooby?
No.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance requested by the Engineering Department to amend various chapters of the city code to reflect changes in the city's operating structure and development standards. I'll call for Travis Wellborn, who will provide that presentation.
Good eve, good evening, everyone. Everyone's probably familiar with this item. We've talked about it several times. Started with the MSDD discussion earlier this year and even last year, and now we've finally gotten to the code amendments we talked about in, at that workshop. So this item is, is the code amendments that we finally got into. We broke the amendments into four different sections. The first one being the creation of the Engineering Department and the position of its director. The second one are the amendments required due to the revisions to the city's Manual of Standard Designs and Details, also known as the MSDD. The third section or category is revisions to the city's Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance. And lastly, we've updated references to governmental agencies and documents. And we sent these out a couple of weeks prior to the normal agenda packet just because of the amount of revisions and how big the document was. But if you guys reviewed them, you saw that a lot of them were not huge changes, but just updating references and things like that. These letters on this slide do correspond to the agenda item that you received. One other thing I'd like to point out, and we mentioned this at the workshop previously, we did put together two stakeholder groups with city staff and the development community to discuss the MSDD revisions as well as the stormwater ordinance revisions. So all these revisions are vetted with those groups. So I'll go through, I'm not going to read each one of these, but this is a list of all the affected titles and chapters. It's, it's a lot of them. And I did want to point out that the city attorney's office is also revising Title X, Chapter Two, and with their revisions will be included some updates to change the authority for traffic regulations and parking to the city traffic engineer and the director of engineering instead of public works director. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions. The first category we discussed is the creation of the engineering department. What we did here is we went in there and established the powers and duties of the engineering director. We also reassigned the powers and duties of the public works director to the engineering director where applicable. Some examples of this are serving as the executive secretary of the Environmental Advisory Commission, management of all traffic signs and signals, and also management of the city's Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Program, the MS4 program, which is the municipal separate storm sewer system, and also the management of the Stormwater Management Enterprise Fund. The second category we're going to discuss is updates to the MSDD. Some of the big-ticket items that needed code amendments due to the MSDD revisions were increasing the shared duplex driveway maximum width to 26 feet, some clarification on private streets within the city. There were some revisions done back in 2014 to the code, and we went in there and wanted to clarify. We've realized in enforcing those ordinances that there was some gray area, so we wanted to make it clear the intent of the city. So we're not allowing private streets for single-family or two-family attached duplexes residential. We will allow private streets for multifamily and non-residential. Also, we, the city has a lighting standard, but it was not referenced in the city code, so we did add that requirement in the city code that developers have to adhere to that lighting standard. Public Works had asked that we add a requirement for dead-end streets over 150 feet to have a turnaround due to their large vehicles and equipment having to back down those streets. That's a safety issue, so we added that. We removed an exemption for short cul-de-sac streets to not have sidewalks, so we're going to require all new residential streets to have sidewalks, even if they're short cul-de-sacs. Everybody needs to be able to get to the sidewalk and get where they're going. Also, we included some drainage system responsibility. There's a current ordinance that requires ditches that require a 48-inch or smaller pipe to be, to be piped instead of open ditch, and we added some clarifications to that, one being that if it's carrying public water, it has to be piped, but also there's an exemption. If you're, if a developer's doing a low-density development, if he's installing vegetative conveyances or treatment swales, he's not required to pipe those because the homeowners' association will be required to maintain those, so that maintenance responsibility won't be on the city. The next updates were due to the, were done to the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance. We're a delegated program from the state, and they have recently updated the, their model local ordinance, which all the delegated programs are required to follow. So we went in there and updated our ordinance to match the model local ordinance that the state Sedimentation Control Commission gives out. I won't go through all those, but some of the big ones, we added a requirement that all measures have to be designed in accordance with the North Carolina Erosion and Sediment Control Planning and Design Manual. Another thing they added is that if you're disturbing someone else's property, you've got to get written permission when you submit that plan to the city before we approve it. That way we can't have somebody trespassing on somebody else's land and they say, "Well, I didn't know anything about it." Also allow for transfer of erosion, erosion control plans without holder consent under certain conditions. Again, that's right out of the model ordinance. If someone passes away mid-project and some, and their children or someone else buys that or takes, inherits it, you know, with the proper documentation, we can transfer that plan. Also, some other things that we did, we revised our appeals process. Instead of going to planning and zoning, that's now going to go to Board of Adjustment, and we also removed the requirement for these plans to be reviewed by the Pitt County Soil and Water Conservation District. It's our program. The county certainly offers insight if we request it, but it's our program. It's our delegated authority, so we're responsible for it, and it's our jurisdiction. Lastly, this was just updates to governmental agencies and documents. Literally, we just went in there, as governmental agencies, the names change over the years, or documents that the city has get updated, and a lot of times it doesn't get updated in the code. So we went through of ones that we knew and updated all of those throughout. There's a lot of changes. Some of the big ones was the highway map of the comprehensive transportation plan. That's the old thoroughfare plan. North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality used to be Dean or Division of Environment and Natural Resources. I won't go through all those because they're pretty straightforward. We presented these text amendments to Planning and Zoning Commission in April, on the April 18 meeting, and there was unanimous, they unanimously recommended approval of the amendments, and also staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance to amend the city code. And if there's any questions.
Councilmember Smiley?
Earlier you said that it, it includes, it makes, the changes make reference to the lighting standard, but it doesn't actually change the lighting standard?
No, sir. The lighting standard is a separate document, and we're not revising that at this time, but we referenced it both in the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. Zoning ordinance for private development stating that, you know, their parking lot lighting and such has to meet the lighting standard, which there are requirements in there. Also, in the subdivision ordinance for streetlights, there's a section in the lighting standards for new streetlights, and that's something that we try to enforce when we do like inspections on new subdivisions. We want to make sure there's adequate lighting and it meets the ordinance before we accept it.
Again, so my question is actually about the lighting standard, and you don't have to answer it here. You're welcome to email it to me if, if it's not readily apparent. What the, a previous comment about LED lighting is, one of the challenges, I understand, is not that LED lighters are, lights are brighter, it's that they have a different color temperature, which affects their apparent brightness. And LED lights, the color temperature changes over time as some of the different colored LEDs in the fixture fail. And so my question to you is, does our, does our lighting standard, you know, a touch on anything like color temperature or anything like that, which is the apparent, rather than simply lumens? And again, you don't have to answer that now. You're welcome to say, "I'll email that."
It's probably something that Shante, Shante and I need to get together on and get you a response. I'm more familiar with the subdivisions, the streetlights.
That's fine.
And like parking lot.
Thank you.
Aspect of it, but we'll get that to you.
Councilmember Blackburn?
My question's a little bit less technical. Looking at the lighting standards, this, this gets, I think, the part that was the MSDD, lighting standards for the city, in general, and I believe they do, but I'm just confirming, that our lighting standards adhere to dark sky principles, they're full shut-off, the shoebox style.
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
That the record light down and not.
Right. One of the things we're looking at with that is, is light pollution, and we have standards that the lighting cannot be but a certain lumens at the property line because we don't want lighting going off your property. I don't necessarily know that we have anything that makes you shield the lighting from a vertical aspect, but definitely you cannot, especially whether you have a commercial site next to a residential, there's a difference between that and if it's a commercial to a commercial. There are standards on how bright those lights can be at the property line.
So that refers more to light trespass?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess what I'm interested in is light, the light pollution. Do our standards address light pollution?
I would say probably not, because they're fairly old. You know, I think they were written in 2011. They're pretty basic.
And we can verify this and provide it in an email back to everybody, but the current lighting standards, to my recollection, do you require full shut-offs depending on where you're at? So the streetlights, I think, are full shut-off, but I'm not, I'm not certain that the commercial lighting in the parking lot is required to be, is full.
And these are really going out of style, but the light packs where they And these are really going out of style, but the light packs, where they put them on the side of buildings and they just shine straight out, are those still allowed?
They are allowed. There are regulations on the lumens, the uniformity ratios, things like that, but they are still allowed for our standard.
Okay. And now I've got a couple of questions about the erosion and sedimentation changes. And you explained one of my questions, which is why we're not running it by the soil and water conservation folks for the county, just because jurisdictionally, it sounds like that's just not something that needs to happen, so we're not going to do it anymore.
Yes, ma'am. And I did confirm with the county that they don't need to see it or have the desire to see it.
My question is kind of more of 30,000-foot. Do you, do you feel that the revisions have made this plan more environmentally sound? I mean, it seems like it to me, but in your opinion, what are you seeing? Or was it more just trying to align with the state?
The majority of the revisions, we're just trying to align with the state. We try to be consistent. That way, the development community, you know, they don't have different regulations in different places that they work. But in doing that, there are some things that I would say are more environmentally friendly, or have the potential to be. One of the things in here is, you know, different standards if you're working in a high-quality water zone. But we don't have any high-quality water zones in the city, so, but that doesn't mean we never will. But we did go ahead and put that language in there, so if we ever do get those in the jurisdiction, we have that covered, and we've got more difficult standards to adhere to.
I think that is it. Yes, because you talked about wetlands and, you know, sedimentation. I think you've, I think sedimentation controls are already in place, and those, those have not changed, nor did, there was any, there was no need for them to change, I guess.
Right. Like I said, we already enforced erosion control with the city, and we're a delegated program. We were just updating our existing ordinance to align with the model ordinance from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have 3 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have 3 minutes.
There should be a crowd for this MSDD.
Everybody's just shining up.
Yeah.
They're all here for that.
It's a hot button issue. They're all here for that.
All right. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve.
All right. A motion was made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six, zero.
Move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, item six is a renewal of the West Greenville Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. Tiana Berryman will have that presentation. Ms. Berryman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So tonight, I'm here to present the opportunity to renew the West Greenville Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. All right, so the community had an opportunity to engage with staff, and also the consultant mosaic that supported our drafting of the consolidated plan. That was approved last month. So this will go hand-in-hand with that. We had a variety of community workshops, interviews, focus groups. There was the, still is available, the Greenville NC Con Plan website, where information on the NRSAs is available, and engagement with the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. All right. So more specifically, staff presented on the NRSAs outside of the larger consolidated plan early in the month of April through our Affordable Housing Loan Committee meeting that was held yesterday. So essentially, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area is a designation for a neighborhood or series of neighborhoods that allows for more flexible use of spending, federal dollars, more specifically, CDBG. So, for example, the, by and large, most beneficiaries of CDBG projects are capped at 80% of the area's median household income. This designation allows staff to assist families higher than that income. So with our owner-occupied rehab program, typically, we're capped throughout the city at 80%, but within the NRSAs and the West Greenville Neighborhood, we're able to assist families who make more than that 80%, up to 120% of the area median income. And this gives us an opportunity to stabilize the neighborhood more broadly and support a mixed-income community. Okay? So the West Greenville NRSAs is primarily in the West Greenville Neighborhood. It's about 510 acres of mostly residential units, and is comprised of three census tracts, 7.01, 7.02, and Census Track 1. All right, this area qualifies as a racially concentrated area of poverty with increased numbers of minorities, higher unemployment, and lower incomes. All right? The housing assessment of the area generally shows more dilapidated or deteriorating units with more issues or barriers to fixing up or maintaining those homes, whether it be by just low, residents having low incomes, or elderly residents on fixed incomes. Those are, they're generally economic barriers to maintaining housing. Okay? So the city currently has several programs in place, or has recently had programs in place that support homeownership and promoting affordable housing, whether it be through new construction, or our owner-occupied rehab program, a series of down payment assistance programs, and then occasionally, we have opportunities for rental rehab. Most recently, that was through our LED program. Okay? So there are a couple of performance measures. Staff is looking to increase the stock of affordable housing and sustain current housing stock, and creating a diverse and dynamic neighborhood, improving infrastructure within the NRSAs, and then providing economic programs to benefit low- and moderate-income residents. So existing resources that allow for service delivery or programmatically support these communities include CDBG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, general revenues, partnership with the finance agency, and then the private sector as well. Okay? So our staff is looking to approve renewal of the NRSAs, and that will be submitted along with a consolidated plan to HUD within the next 30 days. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Berryman? Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you for that presentation. Very interesting, and always good to see the good work that's taking place in this area. All the programs we have can only take place in those three census tracts. Is that right, the programs that you described?
Well, the census tracts that were identified qualify for more flexible spending within. So most of the programs that we mentioned, that I mentioned are citywide. Our owner, new construction can be citywide. We do kind of concentrate the home and CDBG dollars within West Greenville when we can, but, you know, new construction can occur outside of that, those bounds. Owner-occupied rehab program is citywide. However, there are increased income limits within West Greenville. There's the, our down payment assistance program, the 20% is citywide. There's a university, a West Greenville University Down Payment Assistance Program, which is obviously for those particular neighborhoods. Our 10% loan program is citywide, and then our rental rehab program is also been citywide.
And the rental rehab program is rental, residential rental only?
So it was primarily offered through our LED program, which has recently ended. So this is not an ongoing program, but as, as different opportunities present themselves, the city has been able to pursue those, and it has been, the LED program was available for both owner-occupied and renter-occupied units.
Okay. But only residential?
That's correct. That's correct.
While we're discussing those programs, are there any programs for commercial enterprises in this area?
There are not existing commercial programs that are offered through our CDBG program as is. We have had business assistance that's been offered through COVID relief, and then we now have our ARPA Small Business Assistance Program. But these are, do not qualify for, these would not benefit additionally within the West Greenville NRSAs.
And then the facade improvement grant, is it also active in this? Seems like it was acted, extended with.
So the facade improvement grant, I know, has been administered through the planning division, I believe, so I would have to get some, okay.
That's good. We're good. I'm just trying to kind of put together the big picture.
Sure.
So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ms. Berryman? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have 3 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have 3 minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve.
Second.
All right. A motion was made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six, zero.
Move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven is a resolution approving an economic development expenditure and appropriation and agreement with the Pitt County Committee of 100 Joint Business as the Greenville ENC Alliance and Greenville Utilities Commission for the development of a shell building. I'll call forward Assistant City Attorney Danae Alexander, as well as the President and CEO of the Greenville ENC Alliance, Josh Lewis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy Economic Development Week. It's a good time to have a meeting on the shell buildings. Just want to, I don't know if this was like the bad area. Everybody else got the door over there. Happy to be here. I think this project is the apex of several years of conversation. I already got in trouble, and I had so much to say about the project, but I was given five slides. I think I have 11, but they're pictures, so it goes fairly quickly. So we all know that the Greenville-Pitt County MSA is a hub for production and employment. Multiple counties surrounding us in eastern North Carolina depend on us to be successful with our economic development efforts. We have 25,000-plus of private sector employment coming to the county every day, more if you count government employees. With that, I think the conversations the past couple of years have been, how can we continue to grow and strengthen our economic development impact for our citizens and for the citizens that depend on us in the region? Through our strategic planning efforts, we know over the next 10 years that the Greenville-Pitt County MSA will need approximately 1,000 acres or up to 6 million square feet of manufacturing and industrial space to meet our job growth goals. That can be new and existing. It doesn't all have to be new, so nobody freak out. Approximately 70, 80% of projects begin the search with four existing buildings. Primary reason, speed to market. You go from spending money to generating revenue much quicker. Risk aversion and cost, the cost for construction, as we know, the past couple of years have increased drastically. Over half the projects are lost in North Carolina due to lack of suitable buildings and sites. Depending on the year, average request for buildings ranges between 80,000 and 150,000 square feet. The alliance, just this past year, have not, we haven't been able to respond to 60% of the RFPs that come in due to lack of suitable building options. So solutions, build product through partnership, and this is a great example of partnership. Respond to more project opportunities, attract a tenant, improve Greenville market demand exists for major manufacturing industrial projects. To this point, I think we've all come to an agreement that we'll start off with 100,000 square foot building, six-inch floors. Here's the details here I've shared with the council previously. Pictures might, might do a little bit more justice. This is the general location in Endogreen. You see the Denso Manufacturing Facility, which we're currently marketing just to the north. Zoom in. This is the plan for the building, expandable by another 100,000 square feet. You've got a truck court for a company that may come in and need heavy freight coming in and out. Design, these are building designs that just went up in South Carolina by the same developer, so it's going to be a great-looking building, highly attractive, highly attractive design. So with that, I'll open the floor to questions. Of course, we're your team, and happy to get into details.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Lewis?
I do.
Councilmember Blackburn?
And this is really a question that hasn't come up, but was brought to my attention. The precedent images look great, and I know we've, you presented really solid information and facts, statistics, really, about the importance of having a shell building like this. And just to follow up on that, can you talk about when you are recruiting economic development partners or people to come locate in Greenville? Can you talk about why this kind of a building is important, and kind of what, what you say to them, or what they hear when they, when they find out we have this building?
Yes, so I think, again, it's back to the product. So there's a lack of existing buildings across the state. Again, that's why, you know, I just recently came from Virginia, same problem. Past couple of years, nobody's building, they're afraid of it. This partnership with, between us, the city, GUC and others lowers everybody's risk. Right now, people are risk averse, so they're not building. So the actual problem like housing, it just exacerbates, you know? So what this does is provide you a, an attractive product. So when they come to visit, they're not just looking at Greenville sites, they can go look at Greenville, greenfield sites anywhere they like. So I think when you can respond to 60% more RFPs, you have more swings, so you're at the, you're at the plate more often. And as the mayor knows, that's, that's good news for baseball. So, you know, I think that overall, the simplicity of just that alone puts us in a better competitive advantage.
And when I look, again, at the precedent images, it looks to me like this is the kind of space that is going to be attractive to manufacturers, or even transportation types of businesses. Do you have an idea of the types of businesses that may want to use this space?
Well, we understand our target sector, so we understand the companies and tenants that we hope to attract. And through this partnership and agreement with the developer, we can control who makes their way into that building. And so we're going to be trying to attract companies, employ folks at an attractive wage, right? So we want to attract jobs and capital investment. The space itself allows for flexibility of use, so we're not, you know, we're not creating something that's going to be super expensive, that a manufacturing company wouldn't want to, you know, enter into a lease agreement if they're paying $20 per square foot. And so that's the balance, right? You don't want to price yourself out of certain, out of certain sectors. So it, it's a good balance.
And I know that biotech is very important for our areas. Is this the kind of space that a biotech industry would find suitable?
I think the conversion to, you kind of build out the frame, right? And then the internal aspects of it, the quality of the material would allow them to transition the property however they like. The lighting, you know, I think it's going to meet all the LED rules I just heard about. I don't know about lumens and, and all those things, but it's a, it's a bright building. It's concrete, tilted up. It's not, it's, it's a facility that multiple folks within different sectors could be attracted to.
And the last question, again, which was brought to me, this is not the kind of building that would be used for cryptocurrency mining?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Looking at the next item, could you play baseball in this building?
I think it was large enough, the way I've, the way I've been hitting it, I could play in there, so.
Very nice. Very nice. Ms. Alexander, you got anything?
I'm just here for questions and support.
I like it. I like it. I like, I didn't want to leave you out. All right. No other questions?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first, first person has 10 minutes. All others have 3 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have 3 minutes. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eight is a resolution on lease agreement between the City of Greenville and Capital Broadcasting, Inc. for the use of Geismus Stadium to host a Coastal Plain League baseball franchise. Deputy City Manager Michael Cowan has the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor.
Lovely way he animates his PowerPoint, this could be cool.
That's right, I'm going to look through it. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we're pleased to present to you a formal partnership between the City of Greenville and Capital Broadcasting for a lease agreement that would bring a collegiate wood bat baseball franchise here to Greenville at Geismus Stadium as a member of the Coastal Plain League with first pitch being the summer of 2024. Last month, council adopted a letter of intent between Capital and the city that set out the restrictions, the parameters that would be needed in order to move this partnership forward. We are pleased to present to you a formal lease that would actually make this partnership, a formal partnership and bring it to fruition. The Coastal Plain League is owned by Capital Broadcasting, and it's known for its family-friendly baseball experiences and its very affordable game day tickets, and also being to draw talent from the various nearby D1 schools around the region. We look at the overall lease. Basically, the lease sets out various different responsibilities of both the city and Capital. Under the lease, Capital will lease Geismus Stadium between May 15th and September 30th of each year for a 10-year period. First year starting at a lease rate of $30,000 and increasing 2% each year thereafter, playing approximately 30 to 32 games each season. As part of this partnership, there would be about a million dollars, approximately a million dollars worth of stadium improvements funded by both the city and Capital Broadcasting, $500,000 by each party. And the overall purpose of the improvements is to increase the capacity. Right now, it's about 1,000, 1,000 seats. We're hoping to increase that to over 1,500 and by adding seating down first base and third base line. And also, the city and both Capital work together over the next few months to make sure they determine what those actual improvements would be. And all the improvements, whether funded by the city or by Capital, would become the property of the city. This is the various responsibilities of Capital as part of the lease for all the CPO games and events. It includes responsibility for concession, obtain the ABC license, repair any damages to the stadium, cleanup of the concessions in the locker rooms, provide security, any extraordinary field improvements, and operating the scoreboard and the public address system. If you look at the city's responsibilities, that includes cleanup of the stands and the bathrooms, the utilities for the stadium, the field prep, and the ongoing routine maintenance. It's already included within our FIP program on an annual basis. As well, given the dedication of both the city and Capital to the local community, the lease agreement includes a one-day camp for the youth within the West Greenville community to be structured around skill development, character building, and developing a love for baseball. And also, a very pivotal part of this lease is the relationship between the Pitt County Babe Ruth League, as well as Capital Broadcasting and that local franchise. The lease basically states that both leagues will work in very closely with each other to coordinate the schedules of all the games, coordinate at least one fundraiser for the benefit of Babe Ruth on an annual basis, and then offer two spots on the official roster of the franchise for players that previously played within that Pitt County Babe Ruth League. The next steps would be to hold the public hearing here tonight, and council consider for adoption the lease agreement. Then after that, pending council adoption, we would begin to move forward with the improvements between May of this year and May of next year for the first pitch to be in June of 2024. Now pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, the city will hold a public hearing related to the proposed lease agreement. It must be noted that the city will lease Geismus Stadium to Capital at a beginning rate of $30,000, which is above the calculated fair market value of the lease, which is $25,921 each year. And based off the material provided by Capital, the probable hourly wage rate to be paid for workers of Capital is approximately $31.25. It would be staff's recommendation upon completion of the public hearing, the council adopt the lease agreement between the city and Capital Broadcasting, and council also adopt the resolution making the wage determination and the fair market value of the lease. Does that answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cowan?
I like the fact that you had a left-hander up there holding the baseball.
No, no.
And the logo for the league's left-handed, which is good, so it's a positive thing.
Might make some comeback.
I think, I think my days are.
This is good stuff right here, good stuff.
You could thought of first pitch.
All right, no questions, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak in favor of the applicant, on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's doing well. My name is Chip Allen, I'm the Commissioner of the Coastal Plain League. This is Mike Burling. He is the Vice President of Capital Sports, which is the parent company to the Coastal Plain League. We are extremely excited about the prospect of bringing a team here. We are, sorry, I can't explain to you how excited we are. This is a phenomenal market, and we're excited to be part of it. We're happy to answer any questions at this time, or if you think of something later, we'll answer it.
Any questions?
I will say that in, you know, my 10 years on council, there's never been a council junket. We've never like traveled together to go somewhere. And, you know, they're not going to be here till, you know, next June, but presumably there'll be a season this summer. And so, and you have local, there's towns nearby, right?
That's right. Come onto Holly Springs, we'll take you to a Bulls game.
So if we were to, if someone wanted to go to one of your games in the next season.
Absolutely.
What's a good local tournament, local place to go?
We'd want you to come back. Holly Springs.
Okay, good.
It's right down the road.
We can arrange it. We go it.
Only if Councilmember Smiley drives the bus.
I will drive the bus. You may not want to ride the bus with me driving it, but.
Do you have your CDL?
Not anymore.
We'll give you a few minutes to get it.
They took that away from me after the event.
Councilmember Bell?
I don't have any questions, but I'll just say, you know, in high school, I played on the field the Sharks play on Buckard Field. And just for folks that might be concerned about the partnership, which I think is going to be awesome, that field was always in great shape, and I went to a lot of Sharks games growing up. So y'all run a great organization and great leagues, we're excited to have it here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I just would like to echo that sentiment. This is so exciting. I mean, just very exciting for our community, and it seems like such a good fit for our community. Because Greenville really is a place, I mean, our tagline is find yourself in good company. We are a community, a very close community, and I think that this level of ball is just a great fit because there's so many local connections, because it's the collegiate level players, and hopefully some of them will be right here at ECU, so we can cheer on our home team. And that kind of gets at my question that I have, and I don't know who this question is best for. I know there's mentions of working relationships with Babe Ruth. I wanted to ask if there are any codified plans or codified projections for the way that you might work with the Jackie Robinson League?
Yeah, I think for us, you know, we met with RB on that side, and we get the schedule early enough to where I do think we can figure that out. But I think last time when we were here, we mentioned we're very involved with that in the other teams from the Durham Bulls, Holly Springs Salamanders. Durham Bulls Youth Hypothetic League is a league very similar to the Jackie Robinson League, and we help fund that, we do lots of fundraisers. I think that would be just a natural thing for us to do as we get acclimated to the Greenville community.
And I'm thinking in terms of, you know, events and ways to. And I think we have talked about this, for instance, having the players come out on the field, that kind of thing.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, and I would, I'd like to add, I think we, I think we look at it as all of West Greenville, not just the Jackie Robinson League, but making sure that all youth have the opportunity to learn the love of baseball. And one of the things that was included in the budget that was presented Monday night was within recreation and parks and increase in the amount of dollars we have dedicated to community outreach. And one of the focal points of that, of that community outreach is West Greenville. So we've already been in a lot of different discussions. It might not be codified in the lease especially, but there are a lot of ideas that we have as part of just overall general community outreach for all of West Greenville. Again, not just specifically for Jackie Robinson League, but for all kids who might grow a love for baseball, to be able to provide them an opportunity to take a part in a type of baseball that they ordinarily would not have an opportunity to take part in.
Thank you, that's wonderful. It's appreciated.
And I will say from my experience, I never played in the Coastal Plains League, but I've played in three other leagues. The amount of interaction between the players and the community is awesome. I mean, I can remember specifically being in a couple of different cities where we would go out and we would read to, you know, different groups during the summer or whatever. Kids would, we'd go to the library and read to the kids, or we interact. They'd come out and play out on the field. And, you know, now I've got myself involved in softball because I've got two girls. And, you know, I know there was opportunities where softball girls would come out to the field, and they would do the same thing where they'd stand out on the field with the players before, during the National Anthem, and get the experience to be out there and play at that level. So, there's a lot of different opportunities that I think that the league will bring, and I'm sure that you guys have a tremendous amount of history over the years because the Coastal Plain League has been around for, how many years?
Since the early 90s.
I was going to say, yeah, it's been a long time. So, I'm sure there's a lot of experience, a lot of great different ideas that come from those different cities that we can incorporate here in Greenville, just to make it even better.
Yeah, it's funny you said that. So, we have two different ends of the spectrum. You got the Bulls where these guys are, you know, tomorrow they could be with the Rays. It's really hard to get them to.
Sure.
Go and meet with the fans. And then our Holly Springs team, every single Sunday with kids run the bases, the entire team goes out in the infield and slaps five as all these kids are running around. That's the kind of stuff that we can do in the Coastal Plain League.
Absolutely.
And I think a lot of it becomes more obvious the longer we're here. You get to see what the city likes, and town likes, and the people like, and then you get to incorporate it. So each one's a little bit different on what matters to the fans.
And Councilmember Blackburn, you might even have an opportunity to be a host family for one of them.
That's right. She's like, nope. We will be looking for host families.
They like cats and dogs.
You never know, you never know. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
All right.
All right, looking forward to hearing some name suggestions.
For the team.
We're going to get an opportunity to.
We should have a contest.
It will be.
Yeah, okay.
It will be, so start thinking.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes. Carry on, dragging up the class.
Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I don't know, I think they got you over there.
I know, it's like, I was trying to get on that one.
Motion made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion?
The sooner the better.
Sign her up as a host family. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We'll move on to item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item nine is a public finance authority retirement facilities revenue anticipation bonds for Springshire Pre-Development Project Series 2015. I'll turn it over to City Attorney McGirt for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mayor and council, the following persons are here to present or answer questions on both items nine and 10 that are set for public hearing. Charles Boyer, Bond Counsel for the Public Finance Authority, will give a short presentation regarding both items. And Attorney John Small, representing Springshire Senior Facility, is available to answer questions. This item involves a request that the city approve the bond issuances because IRS tax law requires that. The city is not responsible for any of the debt being issued, and the resolution that the city is being asked to sign provides that, and Bond Counsel will speak to that. I want to remind council, the council approved these items at its April 11th, 2022 meeting, but due to unexpected delays, the applicant says that the bonds were not issued within one year as required. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Boyer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry to follow up baseball with tax law. Mistaking the agenda there.
And, you know, we've got really good staff, because I don't know if you got those like hidden like things that he came up with. He said, you're here to give a short presentation. You were here to answer questions. So he laid it out really good for us, so.
Yeah, so for those of you who were here last year, this is very similar, so I won't take a lot of your time, but I'll run through it. Springshire, for when you retire and aren't playing baseball anymore and you need some place to live.
That's right, that's right.
It's a nonprofit community, it'll be located at 3404 North Carolina 43. It'll be a rental project appealing to a broad range of seniors in Greenville. Future plans provide for it to be adjacent to a charter school to provide an intergenerational community and benefits from seniors interacting with schoolchildren. The site is expected to feature amenities such as community gardens, walking paths, bocce courts, pickleball courts that will be shared with the charter school. The project will provide for approximately 250 construction jobs and 55 permanent jobs. The project will be wholly located in the City of Greenville and will pick property tags. So the request here, just to explain it to you, we are asking the City Council to reapprove the issuance of the 2023 bonds. It's new money to build the construction facility and deemed re-issuance of 2015 bonds, which is a tax term. They're, we're adjusting some of the time and the interest rate on the old bonds that were there. The City Council's consideration of this item is required due to federal tax law, which Ms. McGirt was so kind to summarize for you. And then the Wisconsin Public Finance Authority, who's on Bond Counsel for, requires that the local jurisdiction weigh in. As was said, April 11th, 2022, we came before you all. But as the presentation earlier mentioned about construction costs and certainty, the project was delayed by a little bit. Again, I can answer questions on this if you have it, but TEFRA, Wisconsin laws, the two approvals. So, this question came up, why the City Council? And it's because the project is wholly within the City Council, and both the federal law and the Wisconsin law that mirrors the federal law require the local jurisdiction. These are just a couple of real big highlights. Again, that creates construction jobs and permanent jobs. The big one bolted in the middle is the important one for you all. It's not a debt of the City of Greenville, nor does the City of Greenville have any obligation to repay the debt. That will be the nonprofit that is building the facility. And this is required by federal tax law and Wisconsin law. I have an answering question, y'all have.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
Would you mind going back to the slide? I'm just curious not to get too much into the weeds, the financing, go back to the slide. Yes, this one right here.
Yes.
In other words, the reason that you need our approval is because these are tax-exempt bonds, because this is a nonprofit entity that's doing these projects?
Yes, so Springshire is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity. They'll be issuing tax-exempt bonds. So because they are issuing tax-exempt bonds, the federal government passed the law, I'm going to summarize this, TEFRA, not to get too into the weeds, that required that the authority issuing the bonds has to hold a public hearing, and that'll be in Wisconsin, and then the local jurisdiction where the project will be located, which is Greenville. And then the Wisconsin law, it mirrors the same thing. Whereas Wisconsin, the authority wants the local jurisdiction to hold the hearing and be aware of the project.
And so the agency are located in Wisconsin?
So the Public Finance Authority is a Wisconsin authority.
Okay.
And they finance in many states throughout the country, and in North Carolina, several deals have been done.
Now, about these developments, first of all, great news, very exciting. Are these, since they are nonprofit agencies behind them, when you look at the rent framework and it being intergenerational, are the rent levels set to provide a mix of income levels? Or is there anything like that that's going to be a part of this project?
So, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague here, who's counsel for the nonprofit.
John Small, speaking on behalf of Springshire Retirement. This is a market-based rental approach. It is not a Medicaid-funded facility, so it's not your lowest income level. It is also not one of the continuing care retirement communities where you have to have hundreds of thousands of dollars upfront to be able to buy in and do that. This is for people who can afford and pay a rental rate on a monthly basis, and that's what it's designed for. So there is a, you have a lot of Medicaid-funded facilities. You have a few of the high ends. You certainly have one here in Pitt County that's well-known. This is between those two, in a middle-market approach to that.
That is exactly what I wanted to find out, and I really appreciate that aspect of this project because having market, a market-based. of this project because having market, a market-based framework, we really need that in this community. So this is good news, and thank you for that information.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Can you go back to the first or the second one? Right there.
Got it.
So the charter school and the other amenities, they're just things that you listed that may be a part of it, but not something that you guys are doing, correct?
The bonds being issued here are for the senior living facility. That's the $50 million for that.
Okay.
There will be bonds issued in the future as for the plans in the future for doing the public charter school. And so that's.
So is that the school that we thought was going to be done this year that's been put off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That has been delayed because we could not come to lease terms with the landlord on that. And so that had to be delayed. And so we are, that is Greenville Prepatory Academy, a different 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay.
And that's on a delay for a year. Yes, ma'am.
For one year. Okay. And also the amenities, and not to get past this conversation, but will tennis be included with the pickleball courts?
Oh.
I'm gonna pass that to him.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, good luck with that.
The council handled that.
Just need the public watching that.
The
Careful.
amenities described here would not include tennis courts. The charter school is designed to be eventually a K-12 charter school. It will start at K-5 and then add a grade each year as the plan for that. And there are plans for athletic facilities for the charter school that would include, in the future, not with a senior living center, but in the future, tennis courts.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, City Council.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Move on to the final public hearing of the night.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10 is a Public Finance Authority Senior Living Facilities Revenue Bonds for Rising Phoenix Project in one or more series to finance a senior living facility to be located in the city of Greenville. Mr. McGirt.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the presentation by the gentleman just covered that. Yep.
Clarify that. So that's just due to federal tax law. There's the 2015 and the 2023. So there's two issuances. So under federal tax law, we just have to hold two hearings, one for the deemed reissuance of the 2015 and one for the 2023. It would be the same presentation, so.
You want to do it again? No, I'm just kidding.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicants or for staff? Councilmember Blackburn?
Series 2015, is that the year 2015?
Yes. So when the project was originally started in 2015, they issued bonds that that original facility, if you can speak more to the original facility, if you want to hear more about it, but it basically was put on hold. So those bonds have been in forbearance.
Okay.
And so when we reissue the new ones, those are going to restart. And under federal law, even though it's the same bond, when you adjust the, like a loan for your car, when you adjust the terms to it, we have to do another hearing because to involve the local community.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are now moving on to other items of business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11 is an update on the Integrated Mobility and Enhancement Plan for the Transit Division of Public Works. I'll call forward Kevin Mulligan, who will introduce our staff and consultants. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Yeah, with me I have our consultant, Adam Migliore Meyer from ACOM, as well as our city transit manager, Elizabeth Stalas. So this, let me, there we go. So this is an update on our transit plan, which we call the Integrated Mobility Enhancement Plan. But essentially, we are looking to improve providing more efficient improved service as it relates to our transit services. So this is a map of our existing system, six fixed routes as shown here. Each of these routes starts at where that G is. It starts at the GK transportation, ends there. Each route takes about 60 minutes, so what we call a headway. So a 60-minute headway. We reported this last fall during our workshop. This study's been focusing on improving that service by reducing that headway from 60 minutes down to 30 minutes. What we presented back in the fall was that we would do this by introducing a combination of fixed routes and a on-demand service, so what we call a hybrid system. And to roll out this, we have been investigating some alternatives. And I just want to discuss those with you. A little bit about our ridership. This is a graph and table of our six routes. And we can see on that graph, the lowest two, the red and the purple, the lowest two lines. The red line there is the, it's the ridership for Route 2, which goes through our medical district. And the purple line, the lowest line, is Route 4, which is north of the river. So Route 2 is about 20% below our average, and Route 4 is 40% below our average. And again, what we talked about at the workshop was the introduction of on-demand microtransit. And our on-demand would operate in pre-divine zones, and passenger would call up or use an app to secure their ride. That trip may bring them to their ultimate destination, or it may bring them to the fixed route bus, and they would connect to where they need to go. All right. They would schedule that ride the day before. They could schedule that ride five minutes before. One of the beautiful things about it, it would greatly reduce their waiting time. So from 60 minutes to maybe 15 minutes. All right. Advantages of on-demand, essentially, we are reducing wait times again from 60 minutes to 15. This would be a significant improvement, the ability to secure a ride and get the vehicle, get the vehicle when you need the vehicle. So this is a graph of where on-demand microtransit is, exists, or is in planning stage or exploration phase. Wilmington down at the coast, Raleigh, those are both hybrid systems where there's a fixed route and a hybrid, and a on-demand service. Wilson, about two years ago, they converted their entire fixed route to on-demand. They've seen a massive increase in ridership since doing that.
The whole thing is?
The whole thing. They went from, they got rid of every fixed route bus. It went to on-demand service through a contractor. So several hundred percent increase in ridership.
And was there, at the same time, an increase in revenues from the increase in ridership?
There would be. Yeah. Yeah. So.
Was there an increase in cost or?
That's what I was gonna ask.
So there is, they are, they started out at the same cost. They are having to increase costs.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, and as that contract is now coming up, it'll be interesting to see what they do.
Do you have any idea what like the size of the fleet is for them?
And you know what the size of the?
Seventeen vehicles.
Okay.
So one of the things they also did is they greatly increased their coverage area. So this is what we presented at the, at our workshop back in the fall. This is what our final recommendation was on changing our fixed routes to 30-minute headways as well as our on-demand zones here. So there are five on-demand zones and five fixed routes. So that's, but before jumping to that, we wanted to pilot a couple of ideas. And this is, this is our Route 2 pilot map and some news on that. And one of the areas is the medical area. And an update since we last met, the city and ACOM has been meeting with ECU, and we have been discussing a plan to pilot together. In the broad strokes of this potential pilot that we've met on are as follows. The city would operate the fixed route service. It would be a combination of our Route 2 as well as their Route 302. And the blue line, if you can see that dotted blue line, that's their existing 302. Our red dotted line is existing, or existing Route 2. What we would do, propose to do, is convert our Route 2 to that solid red line. So that route, our fixed route, would start at GK and go to the ECU main campus, the Student Union Building, and then continue along 10th Street, some stops along 10th Street, go on Moy Boulevard, stops at the hospital, stops at the Western Campus, and circle their way back. In conjunction with that, in conjunction with going from a 60-minute headway to a 30-minute headway for the fixed route, as well as reducing that coverage of the fixed route, we would introduce these two on-demand zones. And ECU has those vehicles and that service already in, and they would take on that for us. So our on-demand service that we'd be talking about, we would work with ECU, and ECU would provide that to their students, to our customers, our residents. So.
So in the shaded area, that's an on-demand service area?
On-demand zone. Yes.
An on-demand zone, and so you can catch, you can request a ride from anywhere in that zone to anywhere else in that zone?
Anywhere else in that zone.
Okay.
And if you need to get to a different zone, we would bring you to the fixed route bus.
So, okay.
Right. Another option that we were looking at is to pilot both Route 2 and Route 4. We'd like to add additional area to pilot because based on what we're seeing elsewhere, we're confident this will provide service to our customers. The purple area would serve what is currently Route 4, and similar to what we presented last fall, we would propose to convert the fixed route bus to an on-demand service here. And again, ECU would provide that, that service through their vans that they currently operate now. So we would work with them to have them, to contract them to provide that service to our customers. We'd work together to make sure all our apps are aligned and that you can either make a call to secure that ride or online you could enter it using an app.
So there wouldn't be a fixed line then out to the blue area?
There would not be a fixed route.
Okay. So people picking up, so people who are picked up there could be delivered to GK Butterfield?
That's right.
Okay, so.
So that's not shown very well on this map, but that zone comes down to GK Butterfield.
Okay. So the operationally, if you live out, live there, you would, you request the ride, they come get you, they take you to the GK Butterfield multi-modal transportation hub. And then from there, you know, every 30 minutes, a bus is, you know, a bus to one of the other locations is going to be swinging by, and you'd grab that.
Correct. Correct. Or, you know, if you look at the route right now, the dashed purple line, it covers just the area along that route. Or if you needed to go to the DMV, right, that's within that zone. Or if you needed to go anywhere within that zone, that van would, could bring you there. All right.
So, yeah, just to follow up on that, if you don't mind. So you go from the purple zone to GK Butterfield, and at that point, you can get an on-demand ride within the orange zone or the red zone?
You could. That's right.
Okay. Now, the on-demand zones, and I'm sure they were, they're based on ridership, where ridership was focused, was concentrated.
That's right. That's right. So if you look at where the old, the dashed red line, that Route 2, or the dashed blue line, that's where Route 4 would run. So it's based on where we previously had coverage and where our demand is seen throughout the city.
Thank you.
So from the blue, it does take you to GK Butterfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly.
It did. It would. Take you anywhere within that zone as well as to Butterfield.
Okay.
All right.
You're gonna eliminate the four, Bus 4?
We would.
Platform, sorry.
That's correct. The fixed route bus, but provide on-demand service there. All right. Just a comparison of the pilot options. Route 2 covers essentially three miles. Routes 2 and 4 significantly more area, eight miles. Residents serve 12,000 versus 14,000. Certainly Routes 2 and 4 would improve service on our two lowest ridership routes. We want to improve the service, reduce the headways, but also increase ridership. So. So I did want to present this. This is the existing annual cost for both the city and ECU. So to run routes which are very close to each other, our Route 2 and their Route 302, we collectively spend $620,000. This does not account for FTA, right? FTA is grouped in here. FTA pays 50% of our operations and 80% of our capital. ECU pays, you know, penny for penny or dollar for dollar. They pay 100%. But if we looked at what the pilot would cost, there's a slightly, a slight increase because we have more vehicles. We have one fixed route bus as well as two micro vans in the Route 2 area. If we did Routes 2 and 4, it'd be three vans and one fixed. Again, the pilot costs do not reflect the FTA contribution. The pilot numbers would increase slightly, but important point, the pilot, it would show an increase in cost, but an increase in service as well. It very much improved service. And ultimately, when we, when we look at the contribution of FTA as well as a partnership between ECU and the city, we would reduce our costs. All right. So we would improve service for a lower cost. Did speak with NC DOT this week. They have something called a concept grant for exactly what we're proposing. And they received what we were describing to them very favorably, and that would further reduce these costs rather significantly. We'd have to apply for that. We'd have to receive that. But they were very receptive to what we were talking about. So.
So does this have any impact on the headway of the other lines?
Currently, we will be piloting just 2 and 4, right? So the other routes would still be at that one-hour headway. We want to pilot this to see how well it's working before we jump the whole system. But ultimately, whether we pilot this for a year or two years, we would, we would, you know, switch the entire system. The idea is to migrate the entire system.
Would that migration potentially include other sort of on-demand areas?
Yes.
Okay.
So let me just go back to that.
Okay. So, and each of these on-demand areas, I guess, would have, okay, so take the one in the bottom right. I won't guess at the color. There, since there is a fixed route to that, you know, again, I realize this is two, three years out, but, you know, in that area, the on-demand route would take you to the, the mobility hub. And at that point, every 30 minutes, there's a
A bus.
A bus coming through the mobility hub. So the transition there is much more seamless than if you're dropped off there and you got 50 minutes to wait for another bus. Okay.
Right.
So as each of the, I guess the way to summarize it, as each of the on-demand areas are activated, that any route running to that, back to the, you know, the Butterfield site, or whatever the other, whatever interchange there is, converts to a 30-minute headway?
That's right. That's right.
And while you've got this slide up. And while you've got this slide up, if I may question
Absolutely.
All the questions. I think you said that in the orange, or Center City for Rick's benefit, the Center City area, kind of this orange, that ECU would actually be providing the cars for that?
So what I said was, so when we did the pilot, that red line there, I'll just go to this, the red line, we would provide the fixed route bus, and ECU would provide the on-demand service in both of these zones.
Oh, wonderful.
In fact, in all three of these zones.
That's wonderful. And, and I know it's kind of been a, a dream of having our buses at some point kind of collaborating. Is that part of this perhaps, or is that not part of this?
Too premature, too, but these are very positive steps, and
Good, very positive.
I think it would greatly improve the service we're providing to our customers, our students, our residents.
Absolutely. Thanks.
How would that, how would that be branded? I mean, what would it look like?
Great question, and a detail that will need to work out.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but I don't think our buses would look exactly the same that they do now. We would need to work on that branding.
I was worried about specifically the vehicles that ECU's going and picking people up in.
Exactly, both.
Do we work out, okay?
We would expect that there would be some joint branding
That's right.
that would reflect both organizations.
I'm sure there's some local attorneys that would probably want to advertise
Yeah, no doubt, yeah.
on those vehicles, too.
Do we foresee, Alan?
Sorry. Do we foresee margin or working with Viden at all in their transit?
That's, that's a great question. As, as ECU Health has sort of stepped in there, I think we would, we would look to work with all parties to certainly improve our system.
Thank you.
You got more of a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, so.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get you going, I was just making sure.
So.
Kevin will give you an
A potential, just last slide, potential funding sources, really positive conversations with NC DOT on the concept grant, and that would really assist with, with the piloting of the, these, these routes. So staff recommendation is to pilot both Routes 2 and 4, to see the benefits of the on-demand system, as well as our, our fixed route, and, and as well as the pilot between the, the city and ECU. You know, if council approves this plan, city staff and ECU begin to work out the details of this pilot. City would apply for the concept grant. We would obviously conduct public meetings about proposed route changes, and with the target of, target implementation of 2024. So the recommendation, staff recommends to move forward with the CE, the, the City of Greenville, ECU pilot of Routes 2 and 4, where the city operates the amended fixed route in our Route 2 area, with ECU operating the on-demand service in the, in the multiple zones. If you have a super plan.
Councilmember Smiley.
I presume that whatever technology is being used to, to route and, you know, handle pickup and presumably payments and all that, we'll also be able to monitor wait times, transit times,
That's right.
delivery times. And are there readily available benchmarks for what we would expect those to be? And again, I work for ECU, big ECU fan, but in this case, they're a vendor, I mean, and, you know, or in a partner.
Right.
So we're going to be putting our riders on their vehicles.
And vice versa.
And, yeah, and so, and it's, you know, it's, it's easy to understand when, you know, the bus goes along a route, you know, it, it's supposed to stop, you know, at the same time every time, and that's easy to monitor. When you got multiple vans going to multiple places, picking up multiple people, taking them all over the place, it, it can be harder to see, you know, exactly to the extent to which this improved service is, is occurring.
Yeah.
I'm curious about what you have in mind for measuring, studying, evaluating, benchmarking, reporting?
As, them being our contractor, we have oversight, compliance and oversight requirements that FTA requires of us, which we do with Pitt County right now. And they provide our paratransit service. So this would be similar to that. But we would need to work out the details of that. We have a, we have one app, they have another app. We would look to, to find, find a happy medium so that no customer is going through three different apps to figure out where the fixed route is versus the on-demand, and that they have one app, one source of information that they get dropped off at, at this stop, when that, either that fixed route bus is, or when the on-demand service is going to be there. And, you know, our goal is, again, 30-minute headways for the fixed route and 15-minute pickups for the, for the on-demand.
And then, so six months, nine months from now, you know, a year, when we're looking at an interim, an interim report as to how this is working.
We would have that.
We're going to have data.
That's right.
Cool. I guess she'll be here with data, right?
That's right.
I have a question.
Councilmember Daniels.
What have we done to inform the public, especially on Route 4?
Yeah, so we've, we have had three or four, four, we've had multiple public meetings, both at GK Butterfield, as well as up at the Food Line and, in the, in the Route 4 area by the airport, as well as have ridden the Route 4 bus, informing customers of the proposed hybrid system, you know, and, and this pilot. So we haven't done that in a few months, but we would look to do that, you know, over the summer. Educate people more on what our proposed plan for this is, as well as conduct additional public meetings.
Okay. And I would, I would suggest, just, I know, in, oh, I don't know what that was. There are some bus shelters. You may put some information there for those
That's right.
who are waiting currently, so that they'll know you won't.
We will do that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion?
One, just one last thing is, again, I realize we're a little ways away from implementation, but it'd be really cool to, I think council should get regular feedback on how this is working. I know we'll get it from the citizens, but, you know, internally, so we get our own numbers. So maybe you can build in some, some whatever benchmarks and measurements you measure, maybe they can go into notes to council, or, you know, some, something, I just don't want to be eight months, nine months down the road and then be getting a sort of full, you know, a full presentation. It'd be nice to see the data as it's developing.
Right.
I know you already do certain ridership reports.
And be happy, once we get this pilot underway, to provide, whether it's in notes to council, an update on how this is going. I mean, the first step is going to be trying to work out the details with, with ECU.
To just build into the, whatever plan, whatever plans, you know, maybe a, a higher tempo report out during the pilot than sometimes we get. Thanks.
Will do.
So you may actually be here in eight or nine months.
Everybody can read notes, council. You can write the website and read it all.
Okay. All right, motion's been made. Probably second. Any other discussion?
Did you say probably second?
It was.
Properly.
Properly.
Properly. A little, a little fast. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. Move on to the most anticipated part of the night.
I know how excited the council is about
Here we go, here we go.
I know.
Excitement.
The council received the presentations on the fiscal year 2324 operating budgets for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Shepherd Memorial Library, and Greenville Utilities Commission. We'll call forward Andrew Schmidt with the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority.
These seats actually have seatbelts, so we are buckled in.
That's awesome. Under anticipation. And happy National Travel and Tourism Week, too, in addition to Economic Development Week. So, but thank you, guys. Just want to share a little bit of better 2324 fiscal year budget. Again, our mission is to provide an environment of superior travel and tourism experiences. People come for conventions, meetings, you know, reunions, leisure travel, sports tourism. When they come to Greenville and Pitt County, we want to make sure that they have the best time possible, and they go home, they talk about how great our city is, and also the growth that's taken place.
Andrew, I'm sorry, we're not seeing, if you have a presentation, we're not seeing it.
All right, it's, there we go.
The magic man.
Now we are.
Thank you, Brock, wherever you are. So we are governed by a board. Our board has approved our, our budget. You can see our board makeup there. Just want to acknowledge Rick is our city council liaison. Thank you for consistently coming to meetings, and also your guidance. We appreciate that. And also Byron, I know Byron's not here tonight, but he's an integral part of what we do, too, helping us formulate the, the budgets that are going to be sustainable. I think you guys have seen this slide maybe a time or two, but we're going to show it one more time. So just the
I had a good workout today, too.
They come, they spend money, whether it's conventions, meetings, again, sports tournaments, but they're going to come, they're going to spend money on our facilities. And that's great because our small businesses are supported. But the most important thing to us is economic impact and the exposure of those visitors, especially our first-time visitors. So they'll come, stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants and so forth. But the people that are employed there, that's really important. We have over 1,800 people that are employed in hospitality outlets across Greenville and Pitt County. So that's very, very important that we keep them busy. We have that stream of visitors that come in, and they're consistently working. And when they spend money in our community, that's even more effective. So that's a multiplier effect. So visitor revenue that's generated is, is a source of money that we like to call clean money. You have a lot of people relocating to Greenville and Pitt County. That builds up your tax base, but you also have to turn around and provide services for them. Those tourism dollars that come in, they're here for two or three days, four days, and then they go home and leave their tax dollars here without any strings attached, so to speak. Here's an example. We do an economic impact statement for every group that comes through. Obviously, the important part is the economic impact, $1.1 million into the local economy. But look at the jobs supported. That's very, very important. Taxes generated. And then the sales by sector, it touches a lot of different people. So those tourism dollars touch transportation space, rental, retail, recreation, lodging, food and beverage, and business services. So that's a good number of people that those tourism dollars are touching. Expenditures have been on the rise in Greenville and Pitt County. You can see the high watermark for travel and tourism expenditures for Greenville and Pitt County in 2019, almost $280 million. Obviously, it took a hit during COVID, but during 2021, that bounced back, and we're going to have really good numbers for '22. We don't have those numbers yet. Usually come about July, August, but we anticipate them being back, or even a little bit higher than the 2019 numbers. As far as recovery from the pandemic, we're recovering. So we've got, you know, our conventions and meetings are back 100%. Corporate travel's back, leisure travel and sports tourism is back. So we're excited about that. So our revenue sources, where do we get our revenue from for our 2324 budget? Hotel motel occupancy tax, 6%. That's collected on our hotels and motel stays, and also our Airbnbs as well. We do get capital reserve funding for our sports commission, $300,000 a year, which is very helpful. One source of revenue that is not on here, but I just wanted to say a big city to, a big thank you to the city, is really the in-kind things that the city does for us during things like Little League Softball World Series, during things like Pirate Fest, during other, you know, we, we have lots of things that we bring here, but the city services that are provided for those things free of charge really help make those things go. So thank you for that. And we do have some ARPA funding that we're going to be spending over the next four years, and also our interest income where our money is housed. So just pay attention to the pie chart. That's just a breakdown of where the occupancy tax money goes. So we get 6%, 3% goes to retire the debt on the convention center, which is very exciting. We're getting close to having that retired, so that's awesome. And then we take the other half and divide it between us and also the convention center. They get a third, we get two-thirds. And you can see what the total collections were for '21, '22. So our revenue summary for this year looks much, much better than it's looked in the last couple of years. So up 17% over last year. That's really, really just invigorating for us and for our budget. The collections this spring, we're not done collecting. We have three more, four more months that we're going to collect before we know what our, our final numbers are. But we anticipate them to be higher than last spring. Airbnb growth, Airbnbs do pay occupancy tax, so that helps us. If you went on Airbnb today, you'd see about 150 Airbnbs listed in Pitt County. Just last week, that was way higher because of graduation. So that fluctuates, but they are paying into that occupancy tax. Again, corporate travel's recovered. And the active group travel, we've just gone from, you know, hit or miss travel through especially our meeting conventions, to having three or four days we're looking at at the convention center and not being able to accommodate this group. So we are really seeing great group travel right now, as well as leisure travel in our market. So looking at 2324 budget is almost at 1.9 million. 1.353 is from the occupancy tax collections. When you look at that lineup for occupancy tax, just know that a third of that will go to the convention center through the inter-local agreements. That's law. We'll have our sports commission funding at 300,000. We'll use $240,000 of ARPA funds, and those have been approved projects. And then we have our miscellaneous revenue, which is interest. So that's where our revenue makeup is coming from for this year. So highlights, what are we going to do with our budgets in 2324? We're very excited that our staff is fully, are fully staffed for the first time since pandemic. So we have six full-time employees now and two part-timed. So that gets us staffed to pre-pandemic levels. We're going to increase our allocating dollars for advertising and marketing. This past year, we spent about $240,000 strictly marketing and advertising for Greenville and Pitt County. And that makes a big difference for what we do. If you were at our Travel and Tourism Week Lunch this past Tuesday, you saw the effects of that marketing money and how it drives people to our website, how it drives people to come to Greenville and Pitt County. So we're excited about that, that we're going to be able to increase our advertising and marketing dollars. New tourism-related opportunities, specifically around outdoor rec, outdoor advertising, African-American cultural trail expansion. We're excited to, to support some new opportunities there. An increase in sponsorship dollars to support meetings, events, community projects. When the pandemic hit, we had to reduce the amount that we were able to sponsor, and we're going to get those back up to, to the levels, pre-pandemic levels. And then the thing that I think I'm most excited about is we took fund balance for five years in a row to make things work. And what we collect this current year, we will not spend all of it. We'll put some of it back in fund balance to make sure that the next thing that happens, that we're prepared for that. So really excited to, to be able to replenish some of that fund balance as well. We do have a very extensive program of work, but for the sake of time here, I've kind of, I just put the strategic goals that our budget's going to support. Leisure travel to Greenville and Pitt County with an increased emphasis on the outdoor recreation tourism market. 2023 is the year of the trail. We had a great speaker at our luncheon, Palmer McIntyre, who was head of the Year of the Trail Initiative. And with things like Wildwood Park continually to being activated, and the outdoor assets that we have at Greenville and Pitt County, we're going to put some money towards that. And we think that's going to be a, a good return on investment for us. Also, place-making efforts, time for other community assets, art, culture, entertainment, and highlighting diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. So we're going to put money towards that. Increasing convention meeting and sports travel is always something that we're going to try to do. The sports tourism, I think we're going to look at some more non-traditional sports, because we are a little bit maxed out on some of the facilities that we have for more of our traditional sports. But things like cup stacking is a big deal. We have cup stack, cup stacking tournaments. We have our first robotics that we've had. So looking at some other tournaments to bring on
Is there any way you can demonstrate the cup stacking?
Cup stacking.
Do you have any that are here?
Have you ever seen those kids stack cups?
Do you have any that are here that you can do real quick?
I can't do it, but I, I can show you some videos. So, but yeah, they, they bring 1,000, 1,500 kids to, to do cup stacking. It's, it's amazing. So it's revenue. We'll take whatever they want.
Money's money.
Working with tourism lobbyists, tourism basis associations, state legislators to bring a hospitality workforce development lab to Greenville. So we always try to look at what could affect travel and tourism. We got through pandemic. We looked at inflation. Would inflation really affect travel and tourism? And it hasn't. We, we have research that shows that people are traveling anyways. But what is something that's on our mind is workforce. So we're about 50,000 people down in the state of North Carolina in hospitality and tourism workforce, as opposed to where we were before the pandemic. And we still see that here in Greenville. So I wear a couple of different hats. One of the hats that I wear is president of the North Carolina Travel Industry Association, and we worked last year with the state legislature to bring a pilot program to Charlotte, which was a hospitality workforce development lab. And we got $200,000, and we are working that lab as we speak. It brings low-level hospitality workers to the lab to teach them how to become higher-level hospitality workers. So if I'm a bell person, how do I become a GM at a hotel? We train people how to move up the ladder. But we're also taking high school kids and showing them about careers in the hospitality industry, because not everybody's going to college. You can have a wonderful career in the hospitality industry. It's just been a kept secret. So that's going on in Charlotte. But we have been successful in putting money in the house budget for three more development labs across the state of North Carolina. Of course, Senate has to have their say as well, but we were proposing one of those to be here. So whether that will happen or not, obviously, we'll have to wait and see, but that's one of our goals. And then also And then also creating a tourism master plan for Greenville, Pitt County. That is huge for us. We've never had one before. We not really just haven't had the funding to do it. Uh, but we are going to engage in a master plan to help us drive tourism over the next five to ten years. Tell us where we need to be, what space we need to be in. So that is something we're really excited about. Uh, and then, of course, GCC marketing, that is part of our budget. So the marketing that they do comes directly from us. Uh, so their share of the uh occupancy tax proceeds in twenty-three, twenty-four will be four hundred and fifty-one thousand, two forty-four, twenty-six. Um, they do have to go through our board to approve that budget. So all the things that they do is approved by the CBA board uh for that following year. Um, they can apply for any forecast overage via budget amendment. So if we increase the amount that we, if we go over forecast, they can take that money if they'd like to. And marketing funds are basically allocated on a monthly basis. They will send their requests over monthly to us and we approve that. So. Um, that is a little bit about our budget. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Um, I enjoyed working with your board this year. Uh, it's been a lot of fun. I'm also impressed by your ability to budget funds to the penny. Um, I'm hoping that GUC and the library have have done a similar job of uh projecting their interest expense over twelve months to exactly the penny. But no, it's it, you guys are doing a great, great job, and uh I think you're a big part of why Greenville is recovering so well from the events of the last few years.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions?
Not. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for what you and your staff do. We appreciate it. I'm sure these uh, this year uh coming up is going to be a lot more fun to budget than uh the previous couple.
It's been fun this year. It has. Thank you.
It is fun to read your emails to show that the occupancy taxes going up and it's like, must be a lot easier to send those out than uh the past few years.
Yeah, especially since in two thousand twenty, he was the one quantifying the pain. We're down seventy-three percent from last.
So we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Next, we'll have Shepherd Memorial Library.
Here comes the love fest. Six or seven years in a row.
I would like, first of all, to introduce Chris Olfers, who's the current chair of the Shepherd Memorial Library Board of Staff.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Greg. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you on behalf of the board. Um, the city of Greenville has has supported in one one shape or form of the Shepherd Memorial Library since it was founded in nineteen thirty. So um, uh, we really appreciate your continued support and enabling the library to provide vital services in support of early literacy, adult literacy, computer literacy, and really lifelong learning to the citizens of Greenville. Um, but I I Greg wanted me to share a few statistics before uh he gets down to the 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 money stuff. So um, you would think that during the pandemic that the library was, would have been incredibly affected um by the lack of 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 the ability to go and do things. And and actually, um, it was certainly. Um, but if we, if you go back to April of two thousand nineteen, April two thousand nineteen to now, um, the library checked out one point seven million books. About over half of those were were children's books. Um, and and but now, after after the events of the last couple of years, um, they're back up to checking out um about roughly the five system libraries are are checking about about forty thousand books a month. That's like fifteen hundred books a day um for those organizations. And and that, it really adds up to over a million books a year. Um, so those levels have gone, have come back. Um, and uh, you know, we on the board and and the the those of us who've been involved with the with the library for a long time, you know, there was a lot of talk of what it, what are eBooks going to do, what are Kindles going to do? And and really, what we've noticed is that uh people like to hold a book in their hands. Um, and uh, and 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 that's really a testament, um, not only to the power of 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 reading, but the power of of tactile learning. Um, but I wanted to ju- just talk about a few things, especially in terms of children's programming. Um, they're back um completely with almost all of that children's programming, including a baby and me at the library, toddler story time, preschool story time, school age programs, and the summer reading program, of which we hope the baseball team will be uh, will will be active. Um, and then there is a partnership um that REEDY NC does with a whole bunch of other areas, but including Shepherd um through Dolly Parton's uh Imagination Library. Hopefully, you've heard about that. Um, Dolly Parton founded that in the late nine, mid to late nineties. Um, and this program was started in 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 Greenville and Pitt County in two thousand fourteen. And what it does is that you register your child like literally at ECU Health, and um they get a age-appropriate book in the mail every month until they're five years old.
Um, just, I'm sorry, is there a presentation that you're working through?
No.
Okay, cool. Because we're not seeing them.
He he has the slides. I don't have any slides. Sorry, y'all. Um, but uh, what what this means is that by age, age five or so, that uh the these kids, these kids have have over sixty books in their personal library. Then the the most incredible thing that I that I that I saw about this, apparently, like seventy-five percent of the children um in Pitt County are registered for this. So, which is really, really great. Um, in terms of adult programming, um, the uh, the library is still hosting uh free computer, has begun re-hosting now, free computer classes for adults, including basic computer skills, Word, Excel, um, job-related skills, and all of those things. Um, but all this really goes to just for for me to say how proud we are of, and and on behalf of the board, how proud we are of of what the library is doing and has done and did through the pandemic. And um, this is a real, a real feather in the cap of 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 Greenville. So thank you very much, and I'll turn this over to Greg.
Thank you. Thank you. Really tremendous report. Thank you.
And I do have a handful of slides. I hope. Oh, here we go. Good evening once again, and that was CBA. Here we go, to the library. What a pleasure it is to be before you once again. Um, Shepherd Library is really a a story of success in collaboration. You know, we've had the uh Greenville supporting us since nineteen thirty, the county coming on board in nineteen thirty-five with funding. Um, and you know, partnerships growing uh from there on. We're so much more of a library because we've got multiple funding streams and support from multiple, multiple local government entities. And all of the collaborations we have in the community with so many of REEDY NC, the Early Literacy Coalition, um, just myriad organizations pulling together. In twenty fourteen, there were zero children registered for Imagination Library, and there were what they called, what the the literacy professors at ECU called book deserts all over Pitt County, where there were kids who didn't have any books at their home, didn't have shared reading from an early time, and people said, kids learn when they get to school. And we know now that brain development and lots of learning happens from birth on, with all this auditory stimulation when you when you are read books. So it's hugely important that kids have shared reading and books of their own. When they get to kindergarten, that collection of sixty books is in all the elementary school and the kindergarten classes. So they go in on day one and say, hey, I have that book at home. And lots of the other kids, now seventy-five percent of the eligible children, all also say, I have that book too. I love that book. They have the experience of shared reading. They're ready to hit the ground. Before as a librarian, I was a public school teacher certified in kindergarten through twelfth grade. I know when the kindergartners come in on day one, if they're ready to learn, ready for school learning, it makes a huge difference. If they've held books, loved books. So um, wow, um, to be impactful in the community, if the kids hit school and are thriving in school all the way through, everything else is there. Um, economy in Greenville and everything else. So that doesn't happen without budget. Um, I'll say those, if only Greenville funded a library for Greenville and Pitt County, we'd have a lot less library, as much as you all do. If only the county funded it, we'd have a lot less library. If only Winterville or Bethel funded a library, we'd have a lot less library, but together, you get a tremendous larger amount of ROI. Um, but the library has to be nimble because we have these different streams of funding. Um, and as you know, local governments approve budgets in June. Um, we have the library board trustees approving our projected budget with the information we have from local government at the time in March. So we'll be adapting after local governments approve their budgets and we find out what revenue they actually approve. Um, and when we have our first library board meeting in July, then the library board typically um enacts a budget amendment to account for any changes in the revenue and associated expenditure changes. So what I'm about to show you is the library board approved budget, and I only have just a handful of slides. Um, and thanks, Chris, for giving us a break from the slides a little bit. Um, so that one million four thirty-six, seven oh six was the figure we had. From city staff when we were gearing up for March's library board, that was a two percent increase in revenue over um this current fiscal year. And the budget also does include, and that that we also include um two percent for market merit for library staff in that. But the budget also includes capital funds for phase two of library HVAC replacement, which that's been a big deal all across our library system. IT equipment, I'll talk about that a little bit more too, and replacement of the library courier van, which we, you know, burned the wheels off of going between all the libraries, moving a third of a million books across the system all the time. So here's revenue broken down. Again, uh, City of Greenville is our main funder, the biggest funder. The center column is this current fiscal year. The right side um column is uh the requested budget for the new fiscal year. So you see that two percent increase from City of Greenville built in. That's, there's a three percent increase from County of Pitt. We're working to to, since the county funding is half again as much approximately as what the city is giving. If the city gives us a two percent increase of a larger amount, and the county gives us a two percent increase of a smaller amount, the distance grows between us. So what we've worked out now is if we do a larger increase, percent increase from the county, it'll more approach. Um, uh, or not fall as far behind from that funding goal that's been in place since the sixties. It's not carbon stone, but we like to try to get to get there if we can. Um, the county always gives some extra funding for Bethel and Winterville. It's two thousand for Bethel and um ten thousand for Winterville Library. And then the town of Bethlehem and town of Winterville own their own facilities, you may remember. So they pay us, um, they meet a funding request from us to put librarians and staff, books, computers, and everything that makes their facilities a library. So the city owns the Carver Library in West Greenville, the East Branch Library over at Franklin Parks Headquarters, and the main library at five thirty, Evans Street. Um, state aid funding. So we qualify, one of seventy-seven libraries across the state that has a high enough standard of public library service to qualify our state aid to libraries fund. Uh, over two hundred thousand dollars a year now, which is fantastic. That's more than our book budget. Tremendously important. You see all these streams, and that's a projection. So we don't really know what our state aid will be. That's this year's amount. We'll find out um how things shake out with what the General Assembly has allocated and so on as we go. Um, that non-recurring state aid funding, you all are seeing that, right? The hundred and fourteen thousand dollars extra. Wow. Um, we have wonderful friends at the library. The Friends of Shepherd Memorial Library, you're familiar with the book sales that they put on, okay? Um, for thirty years now, they've had a small army of sorters taking donations at every library location, sorting them all year long, putting on these book sales. They'll make thirty thousand dollars a year, and then they'll meet a uh funding request from us each April for support for the summer reading program to buy books as prizes for kids that read a lot, you know, to support the um Public Library Quiz Bowl, the African-American Quiz Bowl. Um, lots of other things, the extra funding for a better book mobile, you know, so wonderful things that they do. But they also have supported the, um, there's a statewide public library lobby at the General Assembly in Raleigh. We've got a heavy-hitting lobbyist, it's Theresa Castrava, the Bulldog in a Skirt, they call her, one of the top ten lobbyists in North Carolina, and she as a sort of pet project, took on the public library. But that can't be funded with public funds, so the five oh one C threes, the Friends of the Library across the state, fund that. And Shepherd Library's friends have done that for years, finally paid off with a big non-recurring chunk. So they put in some money along the way for ten years. If I could get an investment like what they put in and get the one fourteen, three fifty-six out, I would do it today. So that's enabled us to do lots of things. One is, um, we're replacing all of our servers. It's a next generation uh for the library network. Expensive, and we didn't have to come to local government to ask for those funds because we had this big windfall of extra one-time state aid funding. So um, do the friends make a difference? All the time in every way, sometimes, in an even bigger way, which is fantastic. Desk receipts, that's a projection based on, you know, the um overdue fines and things that come in. Uh, interest income, we've got some library fund balance in CDs, so we try to earn some. Miscellaneous income, whoops, is um, sorry, uh, those, the friends request in April plus um for things like the um summer reading program, plus donations, memorial gifts, things like that. And the Greenville Housing Authority, so that's a partnership we have where federal funding flows through the housing authority. And we staff the Moiwood Resource Room with a part-timer who provides a great safe place for kids to come in that neighborhood after school and get homework help. Okay, so that's been going on for years. We asked them to to um try to get an increase so that we could give our part-timer there an increase in his hourly wage, and they were able to do it. So we're stoked about that. Okay, capital. Boy, things have been um really kind of wacky pandemic, you know, era. Supply chain disruptions and um everybody's short staff, the contractors, difficult to get all sorts of things done. Um, since the city owns the Carver Library, the East Branch Library, and the main library, I'll tell you. The East Branch has had all of its old uh HVAC totally replaced with new R four ten A stuff that'll last twenty years. The Carver Library systems are all changed out. The main library, we were able to finally get after some container ship came across the sea, um, the big five units, five and six-ton units of cooling to put on the roof. Those are all in place. This year, we were supposed to do smaller units, cabling for the controls, um, some other smart ducts, um valves and things like that. Wow, um, we found out through the, working with Public Works all year long, trying to get that um phase two on the road, the prices were really getting inflated, and it was still hard to get some of the equipment and the things that we needed. Um, plus we wanted to get, we're eligible for a federal E-rate program. So we get eighty percent discount on our um internet connectivity and some other things that are really good infrastructure um for IT. But um, and you can get cabling, and we need, we have to have CAT five or CAT six cabling for the controls for all this new air conditioning equipment, uh, not the old cabling that we had all over this, and you've got a nineteen thirty section of the building, nineteen sixty-eight wings, and then the two thousand doubling expansion of the building. So really complicated stuff, a lot of cabling. Um, wanted to get that discounted eighty percent with E-rate and found out that that works for data cabling, but not for HVAC, and so they told us no. So anyway, um, it's all going to cost more, um, maybe twice as much as it did before. So that, um, the funding from the county and the city for that is basically rolling over. Uh, and we we have, we're not going to get any of that done in phase two for the, in the little bit of fiscal year that we have left. That was more detailed than you probably needed on HVAC, but they don't even teach that in library school, and I've had to learn a ton of stuff about HVAC. Um, capital. Okay, the van, uh, like I said, um, we've got a courier service that takes, we've got a third of a million books, almost half a million circulation a year. Um, the books are going back and forth with the courier every day and two times a day in the summer, when the summer reading program is running, okay? A lot of books are moving all around. And um, you've got to have vehicles. We're burning the tires off, you know, and everything else. Even with um some great hand-me-down vehicles that came out of the city fleet, um, we're still burning up vehicles, and we needed a new one, but you can't get a new van. There's nothing on state contract, okay? Um, so finally, by Christmas time, we're supposed to get our new van with a lift gate. We always try to do everything smarter if we make a change. Tommy gate on the back would make more library staffers able to do courier because lifting a heavy tub of books is not for everybody, right? Some of us are smaller, older, rusted, busted, and dusted, and so the Tommy gate will make more people able to do that, which will be great. So smarter, better always. Um, we all usually, um, always budget a little bit of fund balance to make sure we can balance uh the budget effectively. So, and I should have said, interrupt me at any time if you can get a word in to, you know, okay. Um, you can ask questions when I'm out of breath in just a second. So.
You're on a roll.
Expenditure budget. Um, yeah, um, if you look at the, again, the center column is this year, the right-hand column is the year to come. Wow, Greg, how can you have less cost for personnel, okay? We're always trying to do everything smarter. We've got a thirty-eight-year employee retiring, okay? And we're not hiring someone who's just as expensive coming in. We've got a fantastic hire, wonderful. Um, but, um, and even though we've got two percent market merit built into the budget, there are still savings coming out of the the changes that we've done. And a lot of times, it's also partly technology, okay? A third of the books that go out of Shepherd Library go out through our self-check units now, a third of those books. There's one in the children's library now. So while we were setting that up this past year, the kids and families were already lining up. Can we use that yet? You know, and the guy could, our IT had to um get out of the way so they could start checking out. So you know, whatever technology we can use, um, we've got fewer staff now than we did when I came fourteen years ago, okay? So we've got twelve full-time employees plus yours truly, including yours truly, and thirty-seven part-timers. It's a small crew to put on half a million circ uh per year. Um, but we're trying to be the best stewards of of tax dollars that we possibly can. We don't want to waste a penny. Um, do more with less even sometimes as possible. So.
Hey, is that on your line?
Got to be adaptable and.
Get out of here.
Let me see. So um.
We need to put him on the last.
Operating, again, um, it's less, less showing up is less. This is mostly because the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of one-time state aid funding is in this year's budget, not next year, so that's a change that you see. There's the housing authority I spoke to already. HVAC, you know, that's going to take a little bit longer. Um, Lord willing, we'll have um phase two completed in the new fiscal year. And um, you have to have happy patrons, staff, and not too much humidity for books. When you got three hundred thousand books, they got to stay dry. So, or there's the courier van with the lift gate. So, or there's the courier van with the lift gate. Yeah, we wanna be sustainable and, uh, you know, like I said, do more with less when we can. Tremendously exciting time to be providing public library service. It always is, right? But, um, you know, when we finally hit that huge milestone, we were stuck for several years with like sixty percent of the eligible kids signed up for Imagination Library, and all of a sudden, you know, we, we're starting to get critical mass, where everybody knows, and they're telling everybody they know, sign your kid up for this, sign up your new baby for this, and that's it. Once they're hooked on books, coming up along, the library's already there, school's already there, Pitt's usually, you've got Community College is already there, ECU's already there, jobs are there, thriving community's there, they just need to get the best start, so we're really excited to be a part of that. Happy to entertain any questions or comments.
I, I don't have any questions, but just, you know, every.
Yeah, every year, I just, I say we get a love fest, 'cause you always blow me away with, with the presentation, and I appreciate, you know, how efficient that you run the library. I mean, really, I mean, Councilmember Smiley was sitting right next to me, said, how many times do we have somebody coming up showing less expenditures than the year before? I mean, you know, it's, it's pretty awesome to see, and, you know, unfortunately, you did lose long-term employee, but.
She's coming back, she's coming back part-time.
Good.
After thirty days.
Well, that's good, so.
Can't get enough library.
Well, that's good, and I mean, I mean, it's awesome to see how efficient you do, and how many of the things that you do to make, uh, your budget work, and, you know, to see how successful the library has been, you know, even through the pandemic, one point seven million books, was that what it was?
Yeah, since twenty nineteen.
I mean, that's aw, that's awesome. I mean, it really is, I mean.
Nine hundred thousand of those were children's books.
It's much better than reading a book than reading an iPhone or an iPad, whatever, whatever other device that's out there, so, you know, I appreciate all that you guys do and how hard you work at the library, um, to continue to enhance the services that you offer, so thank you.
Thank you very much. What Chris, Chris alluded to, um, ten years ago, people were constantly asking us, will there be public libraries the same way we have them now in ten years? Are we gonna have people kindling with one hand and Googling with the other? It's just gonna be ebooks and, and Google, you know? That's not what's happening. So the culture of the book is way too strong. It's the only balance to too many screens. I mean, everybody has to read, my mom insists a living reads screens, little kids in school reads screens, it's screens all the time, but the, the escape from that, the sanctuary is the book, the traditional vessel of knowledge, right? It's just something completely different. And all the studies show, kids who have paper books and turn them into tactile, everything, all of that, it's just powerfully better to learn that way than just with screens, so.
Oh, my gosh, I mean, I think about all the, how every answer's at the tip of your fingers, right? And I remember the days when you'd have to go through books or encyclopedias to come up with that answer, just to research it now, and like, the luxury that children have and all of us have right now to be able to say, what song is that? Just type it up, you know, and, you know, I, I enjoy the fact that I don't have to use my device all the time, that I can go to a book or something that I can hold that's tangible, so.
It's, it's, um, exciting and scary time in ways. Remember Henry Kissinger? Let's take one second to share this. He's a hundred years old, okay? He was Secretary of State with Nixon in the seventies, okay? But he stayed active, he's got a consulting firm, he advises, um, li, world leaders all around the globe now still, and talks circles around all the reporters that were trying to make him look a fool when they're interviewing him, because he's a hundred years old, but he's smarter than they are by far. He's still a hundred years old and making a huge difference. Shepherd Library is ninety-three years old, okay? Headed toward our centennial in twenty thirty and adapting and making a difference, you know? He just go, co-authored a book on AI. We've got four copies at the library, but check them out, The Age of AI and Our Human Future, okay? He, uh, co-authored the book with one of the, the guy who was CEO of Google for ten years and a, um, computer guy from MIT and Cornell. So here's this hundred-year-old guy who can talk to those guys and be smart enough to, to write a book together about AI, and it tells you, it was two, two years ago when it was published. So, uh, it's a crazy world. The book, you know, the actual paper book that's telling you all about this cutting-edge, leading-edge, bleeding-edge technology, it's a wild mix, uh, but we gotta have both. You have to have paper books and, and the rest.
Totally agree. Thank you. Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a quick question about revenue. You mentioned Friends of the Library, and is there a revenue line item for the income that they provide, or is that just?
It's in miscellaneous income, so, uh, right there.
Okay.
So they're within that, they're not usually giving us thirty thousand dollars unless we've got a big ask like, um, the bookmobile year.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I enjoyed the part of the presentation without the slideshow. Speaking of technology, we could actually be very focused.
Balance.
Is that what you were getting ready to say?
No, no, you got me.
No, because it was really very nice just to be able to focus on what was, what you were saying and not have to be distracted, so we all see a lot of PowerPoints, but it was a very pleasant, uh, change of pace, so thank you.
He's a musician, next time he can bring his instrument. He gets paid to do that, not, uh.
Remember when we had that, paved paradise and put up a parking lot?
Big yellow taxi.
We thank you all truly for all of your support, and if you'd indulge me, I would say, as we're getting ready for GUC, um, as much as I crow about literacy and lifelong learning, we know that without water and electricity, we wouldn't be having much fun.
What a segue.
You wouldn't have civilization really without that, so.
What a segue.
Thanks for all you do, and GUC more power to you.
All right, thank you very much. I like that, more power to you.
And there was a while there where the library kept saying, well, all our utility costs are going down every, every year. This is all like two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, it's like, that's 'cause GUC keeps cutting their rates.
Next, we'll have Greenville Utilities Commission and, um, General Manager Tony Cannon. Mr. Cannon?
Can I get the follow, Greg, again?
Here we go, it's all downhill from now.
You got that right. Let's see if I can make this any worse here.
Do you need? There you go. Can you put it on presentation view?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what I'm doing. There we go. Got work? You got it?
Mm-hmm, got it.
Okay. I've often wondered why I get to follow Greg and, uh, Andrew, and I think I know why. The city manager and Mr. Smiley have now heard this, this will be the third time they've heard this budget presentation, and I do believe that that's done purpose, so. I do thank you for the opportunity to come present our budget. Our board has been working on this budget now for several months. The Finance Committee started working in earnest back in January, uh, and we think that we've done the best we can do with the cards that we've been dealt this year. We'll start taking a look, with a look at our current year projections. As you can see, all the funds are balanced, we are using about four million dollars in rate stabilization this year, so there'll be a transfer in, three and a half that you see in electric, there's another transfer in of five hundred thousand in gas. We have budgeted four million, so we are a million ahead of budget on the use of the rate stabilization fund, and you see we're transferring out, uh, about two, really about two million dollars to, uh, capital projects. So total fund to equity at the end of the year, four hundred and eighty thousand. Total budget this year, uh, two hundred and eighty-two million is what we project the end of the year at, with, uh, what you see there, capital outlay, debt service, the turnover to the city right at seven million dollars, continuing our transfer to the OPEB Trust Rate Stabilization Fund and Capital Projects. Key performance indicators, we project to be, uh, right at budget, so three times debt service coverage, twenty percent LGC fund balance, and a hundred and twenty-eight days cash on hand. For the proposed budget for twenty-four, I do wanna draw your attention to this, I do think this is important to note, we are starting the implementation of the Carbon Plan, and, uh, this is required by House Bill nine fifty-one. We, uh, we have been working with Duke, Duke filed their plan back in December, and we anticipate, based on the plan that they filed, that it's gonna be about two percent cumulative rate increases over the next several years, over the next ten years. We're gonna have to increase our revenues in the electric fund by almost thirty million dollars in order to, uh, pay for this cost. We are also dealing with much higher natural gas prices this year, so, uh, natural gas generation makes up about forty percent of the Duke fleet, and for every thirty percent increase in gas prices, it's three cents or four percent to the overall cost. We have received updated projections from Duke back in January. While this looked flat last year, this does not look flat this year, so, uh, April of this year, we, we're gonna be pretty much even. We do anticipate increases of five percent and four percent in twenty-four and twenty-five. We'll be using the rate stabilization fund for some of that, some of that's gonna call for some, uh, increases in the power costs, uh, power rates as well. Our recommended actions this year to the board are zero percent rate increase for electric, for the, for the upcoming year, we're gonna be using rate stabilization, about seven point eight million dollars of rate stabilization. Next year, that's in anticipation of a rate reduction when we roll off the defeasance debt at twenty-five, so that is planned to be used. Four percent increase in water, that's down just, that's right on the money from where we were last year. There is an increase in the monthly surcharge to Bethel from fifteen fifty to sixteen forty-one. Uh, that's due to the cost that came in on the bids for the water system improvements in Bethel. Uh, no rate increase in sewer, we had a slight increase projected last year, but an increase in natural gas.
Is there a point at which Bethel becomes sort of peripetue with the rest of the, the system?
They, they do become, uh, level with the out-of-town rates once the debt is paid, once it's all paid off, so we're probably looking about, I think we have projected twenty years.
Okay.
So about ninety more years. We do have some fee modifications because costs of providing these services have changed, outdoor lighting, temporary service, and, uh, underground residential and commercial service installations, system development fees for water and sewer, we're required by law to do that every five years, we have to do a cost of service on that, and, uh, we did that last year, we'll be holding a public hearing on the, how that was done, but as you know, the cost of all of these projects have gone well up, and that's how we calculate the system development fee, so they will be adjusting for water and sewer. Since we only do it every five years, we do a five-year implementation plan so that in the fifth year, we're where we need to be as we do the next study going forward. Tap and temporary service fees and meter testing also being adjusted in water, and then the cut-on gas service and the delivery pressure change for the gas system as well. The changes to the terms and conditions that you see here correlate with the actions recommended on the previous slide regarding changes in fees, and, and also at the very bottom there, you see that we're removing Section ten of Part D, the Customer Service Policy, which is an installment pay plan. That was being used a while back, uh, when forced annexations were allowed and, uh, citizens were forced to hook on to the sewer system, and we would, we would do an installment plan then, that's no longer the case with annexations, so, uh, we're gonna remove that from the terms and conditions. We are adjusting our solar rates, uh, this is the, uh, bio-sol rate, you'll see that we're going down, this is based on cost of service that we were able to do, uh, because of the data that we've now collected over several years of having solar installations. And you'll see that the facilities charge is coming down, also the demand charge, and then the, uh, energy charge for on-peak is being adjusted up, uh, and then off-peak is being adjusted up slightly. We're also adjusting the periods for which the peaks are applied, uh, you can see the reductions there. So for next year, we're looking at a two hundred and ninety-five million dollar budget, uh, we are gonna be using ten point two million dollars in rate stabilization, as I mentioned, seven point eight in electric, and then two point four in natural gas. The main drivers are always purchased power and purchased gas, that will continue to be the case. We're anticipating about seventeen million dollars in capital outlay, fifteen million dollars in debt service, a turnover to the city of seven point one million dollars, and then, uh, transferred to capital projects, two point two million. So, um, a tight budget next year has been weather-normalized, but it helps us fund what we need to fund as far as capital projects, and it helps us continue to move forward. Key performance indicators should remain stable, uh, we're projecting two point ti, two point eleven times debt service coverage, uh, the LGC fund balance at nineteen percent, a hundred and twenty-two days cash on hand. The key provisions in the budget, this is year three of five of a five-year rate study that was approved, uh, this is to help us do away with some interclass subsidies within the electric fund, and year five, uh, year four of five of the, uh, plan for water, and it's also year four of the implementation for rate increases for the big projects that we did at the water treatment plant, uh, water system improvements. I remember we had that joint meeting at the water treatment plant several years ago, and we agreed to a funding plan, uh, what we did is we, we did not have rate increases year twenty or twenty-one, so we're back on schedule to finish that up next year. Turnover to the city, seven point one million, as I mentioned, we are continuing our support of the Greenville ENC Alliance. As a sustaining member, five hundred thousand of that is our normal pledge, a hundred and fifty thousand of that is for us to budget the carrying charges related to the Shell Building, which you all have approved earlier in that agreement. Continuing to support the Energy Conservation Program for the city at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mentioned the transfer from rate stabilization funds, and then also I mentioned the infrastructure maintenance and expansion. Uh, the two percent for employee market merit at seven hundred and forty-three thousand, continuing our health and dental plans, transferring to the OPEB Trust, as I had mentioned, and we also have funding in here to bring on replacements prior to retirement of key personnel. Some of the assumptions that we used are the growth rates, one point six percent for electric, one percent for water, one and a quarter for sewer, and one percent for gas. We always wanna take a look at this and what it does to our long-term financial model, because we don't wanna kick things down the road, and we don't want to overburden our customers in the current year, so we always look at a five-year plan, we actually look at ten years. It gets a little fuzzy after five years, to be honest with you, but we wanna know kind of the direction that we're headed. Uh, you can see here in the green highlighted areas that our key performance measures remain stable throughout the period. There are increases, uh, as, as you would expect, when you have inflation numerous years at, uh, well over five percent, we're gonna have to have some increases in there, uh, and, and we're trying to balance that over time. This is our capital improvements funding plan, uh, just wanted to just point you out, point out to you that we are trying to maintain a proper debt equity ratio here, so over the five-year period, we're looking at about fifty-two percent to be funded through debt financing. The rest to be funded is pay-as-you-go or with cash. I will point out that we have received to date about thirteen and a half million dollars worth of grants for water and sewer projects, that's included in the, in the plan as well. Capital projects that we're asking to be approved this year is a, a substation at Hollywood's Cross, I mean Hudson's Cross Road, upgrades at our water treatment plant lab, and then various gas system improvements for commercial and industrial customers. I will add here, when we come back to you in June, there will be a fourth project on here, we're gonna take it to our board in June as well, and that is appointed delivery substation transformer down at Mills Roads, at our newest substation down there. We had to put our spare into service a couple of years ago. We got the lead times back from the manufacturers, and they're looking at two- to three-year lead times on these transformers and about three times what the cost was, so that'll be a four million dollar project that we would like to go ahead and have approved this year, so we can get that transformer on order. It is a critical component to our infrastructure to be able to provide the services that we need to provide. So in summary, uh, we're continuing to do what we've done with the city transfer, the, uh, conservation program in the ENC Alliance, all of our funds are balanced, uh, you know what the rate recommendations are, we covered that, and, uh, we'll be back to you next month to amend our current year budget. If you recall, we do that normally once a year, we do it in May each year, so we'll amend it to show you what our propos, what our, uh, projections reflected in this, in this particular presentation tonight, and then we'll go back to our board in June, ask them to approve it, and then send it over to you for approval that evening. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, um, a couple of questions, I'm gonna kinda, don't, again, don't wanna get too much in the weeds, um, with the rate stabilization fund, just so I can understand that concept in a global way, is that money that is set aside to try to help assure year-on-year that rates are large, that you don't have to have tremendous spikes in rates?
That's what we're using that for. We have projected this year to use five million, we're gonna use four. If you'll recall, when we, uh, sold the assets back in twenty fifteen, we realized about a fifteen percent reduction in our costs, about fourteen and a half actually. Instead of passing that along in year one, we knew that we were gonna have cost increases that along in year one, we knew that we were going to have cost increases throughout this period up until 2025. And in '25, we see the defeasance debt roll off. So, we have planned all along to be using this rate stabilization fund to help us offset that. Now, after, after year '25, when the defeasance debt rolls off, we'll start funding again, the rate stabilization fund, because we do have fuel true-ups every year. And we'll be using that for the fuel true-ups rather than having to embed that into the rates.
And the assets from 2015 was?
It was, uh, it was the nuclear plants and the coal plants that we own. The power agency sold those to Duke.
Right, okay, all right. I remember that. That was that big settlement, okay.
Yeah, and we ended up reducing rates over a three-year period by 14 and a half percent.
Okay, right, right, right. And so, some of that savings, instead of being immediately and directly passed on, consumers were sort of set aside to help subsidize in a way if they were...
It was to help us levelize the rates going forward, knowing that there's a date certain that we're going to have the defeasance debt roll off, and knowing costs generally aren't going down, they're going up.
All right, good. Thank you for that. And then this year, you're using how much of that rate stabilization?
This year, we'll be using $4 million this current fiscal year. Next year, we'll be using 10.2 million.
And why so much next year?
Because costs are really increasing. I think I showed on that one rate, Duke is projecting that we will have a 4.1 percent increase in April of '24. So, instead of putting that in the rates this year, we decided to use the rate stabilization fund for that. And also handle some larger cost increases that we have, starting this year with the fuel adjustment charge that we anticipate in July.
And fuel, uh...
Fuel adjustment. So, every, every year, we get a projection from Duke, what the rate's going to be. Really effective January 1st, it rolls to us April 1st. And then whatever that fuel cost is to generate the electricity at the end of the year, whatever that is, is adjusted. And then it, sometimes it's positive, sometimes it's negative. This year, it was really, really positive, so.
So, my next question, I'll just go ahead and kind of ask the easy one. 5 percent increase in gas rates?
Five, five something.
5.5, I think.
That is, I mean...
5.5 percent. So, we haven't had an adjustment in our base rate for natural gas in over 10 years. Costs certainly have gone up over that period of time. But what we've also realized is we are going to have to expand our liquefied natural gas plant to meet the demands that we have. And that expansion is not going to be inexpensive, so we're going to fund that also with cash and with debt. But we need to start building that cash fund now to make sure that we have the funds when that project comes online.
And that actually is what I was wondering about with the liquefied, liquefied storage. So, is that gas rate increase going to capitalize the liquefied storage?
It's going to help us fund that capital project. Part of it is.
And my concern is that's, that's a pretty big hike for one year.
Well, remember, we haven't touched those base rates in over 10 years.
No, and that's wonderful. But that's still a pretty big hike for one year, 5 percent.
It is. So, the total cost to the customer, water and sewer, so the gas cost will be going up about $6.5 on a typical residential bill.
On a $119 bill.
What was the inflationary rate over the last 12 months?
9 percent.
9 percent?
Still, it's a big jump. More complicated question for you, the solar rates. Sounds like we're going to net metering?
So, we already have a net metering rate. We are revisiting our net metering rate. We've got a consultant working with us now to do an, do a cost of service study on that net metering rate to make it really reflect how we're purchasing power. We anticipate having that done sometime in the fall. I would say August, we'll get that information back. But we're also looking at another renewable initiative, and that is community solar. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a subscription service. We're allowed to do that under our contract. So, we're going to build, we're, we're going to study building a 500 KW solar farm, which is about a five-acre solar farm, and then selling subscriptions. And they'll sell subscriptions by the solar panel. So, if Emmanuel wants to buy five panels, he'll be able to subscribe to five panels. There'll be a cost for that, and then it will be netted out on his bill. So, we are in the process of developing that as well.
That's fantastic news. Question about how, just kind of, again, from a 30,000-foot view, one of the things I hear from people who switch to solar panels, they get solar panels on their house, they want to switch to solar, is that in the end, they have to pay a fee to GUC in order to participate in the net metering?
There's, there's a demand charge there. So, we're looking at how we can adjust that or even do away with it and have one base facility charge, and then you use your solar energy. One of the requirements we're going to put on though is that you can't build, you can't overbuild your system. So, whatever your load is, that's what you're able to build on your solar, on your solar system. And then we're going to, based on the data that we've been able to collect and based on industry standards within our area, we've got a consultant looking at what those rates would be, the energy rates.
So, is that going to make it, and, and just to your first point, it sounds like you're saying I can't make a business out of selling power back to GUC?
No.
Okay, even though it'd be solar panel, that power, that would be good.
We are required, we're in all requirements, customer of the power agency. That is a contract, and we can't violate that contract.
Okay, got it, got it. So, just again, from the 30,000-foot view, is it going to become more economically reasonable and rational for folks in Greenville to put those solar panels, to equip their homes with solar panels, where they'll have a, a more, you know, I, I say equitable, but just a more sort of cost-effective way to do that?
I will say that I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know what this study is going to show us in its entirety. I do think that we'll see a little more favorable return, but I can promise you that as cost, as our power costs continue to rise, those paybacks become quicker on some of those installations. Realizing, of course, that those installation costs are going to rise too, but it will be somewhat better. It's still a very hard thing to do without subsidies. So, if, if the federal government for some reason were to stop some of the tax subsidies, the math would just would not work.
So, it's, it, it continues then to be very difficult for an individual homeowner such as myself to put solar panels on my home and to be able to engage with GUC without having to pay some fee or feel, not get the exact, when I sell, I'm not getting the same price that it is when I buy.
Oh, you will not get the same price it is when you buy, because there's embedded cost in there. And our, our information shows us that solar panels are not always producing energy when we're peaking. So, particularly in the summer and in the winter, on the tail ends of those peaks, if we're late in the afternoon or early in the morning on those peaks, then the solar panels aren't producing. So, that average cost that's in there doesn't work.
Even though they could, the power can theoretically be stored, it's, it's got to be immediately used when you're buying it that way?
It does. We, we're going to pay you for it immediately if it's coming back on our system.
Okay. My last question has to do with the solar subscription program. Is that going to be the same cost as just regular kilowatt-hours, or is that going to be more expensive? I'd love to buy solar power, but is it, is it going to be like the difference between the cheap champagne and the good stuff, or I mean...
I anticipate that the cost for, so there will be a subscription cost to help us pay for the infrastructure, okay? So, we think, we're thinking that a 5 megawatt, I mean, a 500 KW system is going to cost us somewhere around $1.3 million. Well, that's going to have to be paid for by the people subscribing to the program, so there will be a subscription fee there. But there will also be a fee for the power that's generated from that that's being credited to the customer. So, my guess is it's going to be the same avoided cost that we come up with in the net metering rate, but we have to go through the exercise based on the array of the solar panels within that development to see what that would be.
And again, I love the idea, just kind of looking at the mechanics of it. So, if I personally want to subscribe and I help sort of capitalize this program, that's going to go toward future energy bills of mine?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, super. Thanks very much.
You bet.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yeah. The, the thing, the last piece she was talking about is, my family has been very interested in solar, but we have a lot of trees and, you know, we can put all the, all the panels we want on our roof, and the sun's not going to shine on them. And so, you know, we were talking about, so, well, what if we like, if we owned a pasture somewhere and we put a whole bunch of panels there and then had it, you know, wired to our house, we could, in theory, do it. But we're not very, we don't own power lines or anything. And so, when you guys came up and said, "Well, you know, tell you what, we can build a big one. We own, you own power lines." It's a really cool idea. It's a way of, for people to, you know, take advantage of solar power. And presumably, they'll get some quantities of scale. Presumably, you can do it for cheaper on a per-screen basis, putting it in the middle of a field with 1,000 other ones, and I can put eight on the roof of my house, you know, that people have to climb up there. So, it just seems like a, a natural and logical way for a community to kind of pool their resources and take advantage of something which a lot of us believe is an important part of, you know, preparing for the future. So, it's really cool to see GUC involved in that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I mean, I will say, based off of what the inflationary rate's been, I mean, this is better than I expected. I mean, honestly.
Well, I would say that it took a lot of hard work. The staff did a great job finding what we could find.
Well, I mean, I think too, also, just showing how much money that you've had to put from the rate stabilization fund. I mean, 10, $10 million is a lot of money. I mean, to be able to stabilize the rate to have a 0 percent increase, I mean, that's a significant amount. So, that could show you what could have happened as far as what could have been passed on to the, to the homeowner. So...
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
We don't approve until...
Moving on to lucky number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. 13, item 13 is a review of historic signage in the College View neighborhood in consideration of a historic district signage policy. Traffic engineer Stacy Pidgbert will have the presentation.
I remember the last time we had this at the workshop.
Yeah.
That was tough. That was tough. Poor Stacy and Lisa, they were working on something hard, and it was like...
And they have plugged away for more than two and a half hours here tonight, but I think that they have done a great job with a concise presentation.
Yep, okay. So, if you remember back in December, the Historic Preservation Commission requested the city consider a new design for historic designation, designation signage to be placed on top of our street name signs. Currently, we do the yellow sticker that is on the left, and that goes on the actual street name sign. They are requesting something similar to the right, which is a, an actual topper that will be placed on the street name signs. After review, the city is recommending installing the new historic sign toppers at intersections around the perimeter of the neighborhood, which is approximately 20 locations. And as a result of that, staff will no longer supply and apply the yellow historic district emblem to the green street name signs. So, as signs are damaged or stolen, we will just replace with a normal street name sign. The signs for the 20 locations will cost approximately $2,200 to be paid for out of the HPC's budget. They are also requesting the city consider a new design for neighborhood entrance signs. Currently, we use the oval signs on the left, and they are requesting a larger standalone sign to be placed. These signs will require installation of a new pole within city right-of-way, so staff would have to determine the, the locations of these signs based on available right-of-way. Staff recommends installing two neighborhood entrance signs, and these signs will also be paid for out of the HPC's budget at a cost of approximately $2,000. This is just a map of where we are proposing the signs to be located. The red circles are the sign toppers, so that's approximately the 20 locations, and the two blue circles are the locations for the neighborhood entrance signs. So, the total cost for the installation of these signs is approximately $4,200. And we also are, have drafted a policy for historic district, district signage, and this just falls for historic districts that fall under the purview of the HPC. And it pretty much is just reiterating what I just said. We will put the sign toppers on the perimeter of the neighborhoods, and we will install two entrance signs per district. And that is it.
All right. Any questions? I got one question before you go.
No, you go.
As far as, is the HPC, are they good with it coming out of their budget? I mean, has, has everybody signed off and said that's okay to go out of their budget? Have we had a conversation with them, massage this in and all?
Budget for the residents, so we have...
Right. Our, our issue is, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Daniels.
No, great. I was just saying the stat or the...
Right. We just, with our allotted sign budget, had not anticipated the cost of these additional entrance signs or sign toppers. And so, at this point, in order to move forward, we have to find a source of funding.
And, and HPC's good with this? We, we run this by them? I haven't got any, no casey?
I don't, right. I don't think we have...
I have, I've got a close contact, and I, I think a relative just gave me a thumbs up, so...
Okay.
That might have answered it.
There we go.
I'm not calling any names or anything.
Let's call it a yes, okay? Let's call it a yes.
Okay, all right. Good. Councilmember Blackburn, sorry.
Just a quick question. Do you have, do you know what color these sign toppers are going to be, what they're going to light?
Um, we're proposing blue and white.
Okay.
And it's the, it will have, we haven't finalized the design, but it will have the same window emblem that is currently on that yellow sticker will be at the top. So, they're not going to lose that design.
Good. It'll be recognizable.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Now, at one point, and I, and this may be not the time, and it's not, certainly this is my, within my district, but this is probably more Monica and Rose's district. There's other historic districts in Greenville, and I'm thinking of Skinnerville and Higgs. Will we have signs like this for those neighborhoods?
Right now, we're just proposing local historic districts, which are, College View is the only one currently.
But if, if council can find additional funding at some point, then clearly that would be an option, right?
Yep.
Say out of like a 10,000 allocation for the...
Nope.
I'm just saying that, it sounds like that if they can figure out how to do this and what, find one that works well, then the opportunity to expand it in the future is there, right?
And, and with, and there has been, with the development of 10th Street, there have been some neighborhood markers along the 10th Street corner. With the, the build grant coming through on 5th Street, there will also be some neighborhood markers along 5th Street.
That's good.
But what this policy does is this, Stacy is correct, it really provides for signage for the, for the local, the one local historic district that we have.
Why is that, that a local? I mean, okay, the thing in this, of it is, is I still have this argument with everybody is that West Greenville has historic places too, because those places were built for the whites. They moved out. They lived in them for 50 years, and they moved out. And other people have been living in them now almost 50 years again. And nobody's trying to find out what area in West Greenville is historic.
Well, Mayor Pretem Glover, we are, I'm sorry, my contact's falling out. We are happy to explore areas in West Greenville that would be interested in pursuing a local historic designation. We are happy to do that. What this does, again, this just puts some signage in the College View neighborhood. If you would like us to go out, if the council would like us to go out and talk about and explore opportunities for a local historic district in West Greenville, we're more than happy to do that. And, and if I had seen nodding heads, and so, I'm happy to, to work with the, with the staff of the planning department to start doing some of those inventories.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, definitely. That's great.
All right. Any other discussion, comments, recommendations?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 14, which just happens to be the last noted item of the agenda.
It is consideration of an additional one-stop voting site, and I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
Okay. Brock, can you forward my slides, or do I need to go down? Okay, you're awesome. Thank you.
Wow, how come everybody can't do this?
So, the county board of elections has sent over the proposed, or the estimated cost of the elections. Next slide. Included in those costs per our 2009 agreement with the board of elections is also the cost of running two sites that the board of elections will determine for the entirety of the early voting period and election day. So, the table in front of you is just showing those costs. Base cost is about 125, 124.5. Additional site costs are 11.5. And what we would need tonight is just some kind of direction from the council if you would like to request additional sites. Next slide, Brock. So, just to run you through the process of requesting additional sites. So, what we would need to do is we would need to submit these requests to the board of elections by June 1st. Board of elections will receive these requests and consider them, and then the board of elections will actually determine the number of requests that will be granted and the location of these additional sites. So, Brock, could you go back to the previous slide? So, again, these are the costs, the estimated cost, and we just need some direction from council.
And we did two sites last time, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And that's been kind of the standard of what we've done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And just to note that these sites that you request, I mean, this isn't anything we can choose, it's automatic, but they will only be run for the last week of the early voting period.
And I think, yeah, I think some of the confusion that we had last time when we voted on it is we thought that we could select the sites, and we found out that they, they select the sites.
That's right.
And is it just the site?
No, we, because I remember there was some discussion about using the student center, and a lot of people were going to the Willis Building and...
I, I wanted it in my backyard, and I wanted to be the one at the gate letting people in and out, but they said I couldn't do that, so...
I think since, since we've got one person that's announced that he's not running, maybe you should make a decision on that.
I move we, except, I move we to the, the full two additional sites.
So, all right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before we move on to that, could I address the council from a little place?
Yes, sir.
It's been on my mind for a while. I've talked to several of you, and we heard tonight about the power of visitors and what they can do to raise funds in our city. It was mentioned, I think I looked at the figures, about almost $2 million were raised because of the World Series of Little League and the World Series of Softball. Each of you heard me talk about how Greenville would be a destination city, and part of that is the amenities that are attractive to people, to retain our citizens, bring them here, and also bring industry. And this week's been a really segue into what I'm getting ready to address now, which I'd like to ask this council to direct staff to do, and that's this. I look back, 2004... I look back, 2004, Sports Illustrated named us as a sports town USA and one of the top 50 in the country behind us. That was in 2004.
You want to stand up and hold the flag?
Yeah, I did see that. I didn't know.
Do you want to, do you want to stand up and hold it?
No, I'm okay. I'll let Councilmember Smiley hold it, of course, to correct the way instead of me.
Unless, I think you would.
No, I'm okay. I'll stay, I'll seat. I want Councilmember Smiley to get the spotlight a little bit. And then we had our master plan for the Recs Department, playbook 233, to recognize that one of our top priorities are multi-purpose fields. Our five-day economic summit that we've had this week with economic experts recognized the value of recreation as a major attractant for people to come here. I've talked to several people, and, you know, we're missing out on a sports complex. We're losing potentially millions of dollars every year, because if you look at these events that people attend, 1,500, 2,000 people, even 2,000 to 3,000 people come. And we are in the caboose. I know I've said that's my little catchphrase, I'm tired of riding the caboose on a train of progress. We need a sports complex. And so, at the end of the day, what I'm asking, I'm hoping my fellow councilmembers will join me, and directing the city to look at a feasibility study for a sports complex, whether it should be indoors or outdoors or some combination, the location of where it should be in terms of viability, and also look at partnerships. I know there's some interest in the county. I've spoken to their county manager. The university, I think, has some interest in it, and also some private interest. I think we are, we've talked about it for a while, but I really would like for this council to direct staff to do a feasibility study, so we can start moving in that direction to see what do we need to do, where do we need to do it, and the partnerships that are available, and what type of complex that we need to have here to be attractive, because we really need something like this. And I just feel like our city is missing out on opportunities every single weekend, year round, where we could bring in millions of dollars to the city. And also, it's an amenity that I think would be attractive to citizens who want to come here, and also industry, because it's one of many things we need to have. But I think it's, all the numbers are telling us this. Our master plan for the Recs Department, the economic summit, the experts are talking about it. Those of us who have, who have friends and family that travel and go to these sports things, we really need this thing. So I'm asking that council members join me in directing staff to do that feasibility study.
I'll second that motion. Councilmember Smiley?
At the last meeting, we gave the staff a couple things she want, we wanted them to bring back to us as proposed additions to next year's budget. Would this be similar, that we could ask them to look at, can they add, put in the next year's budget funding to conduct that, that, and that, that study? And we could all, we could prove it all with the rest of the budget in the coming, in the coming month? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, it would be an excellent idea. Excellent idea.
I like that.
We just need to get, get the train moving in the right direction.
Is that feasible to come up?
Yes, we will be able to, we will be prepared to talk with you about the changes that the council made Monday night about the budget, and to add this as a third, to give sort of a bit of a scope, as well as a funding, funding options for it. Okay? We're happy to do that.
So if that's your motion, and that's the second, I'm happy to support that. Great idea.
That would be my motion, to fund it, a feasibility study, as to the points for this sports complex, as to where, when, and how, and the construction of it, and forming partnerships to help us get it accomplished. Thank you.
All right. So it's been probably motion, I mean, yeah, probably motion, probably second. Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a quick, just a quick comment. My, my approach is never either or. And I don't intend my remarks to sound like it's either or. And Councilmember Robinson, I have immense respect and admiration for the enthusiasm that you've brought, and I know you've talked about this for a while. My concern, and I will, I will support this motion, this study, for sure, because I think we should have all the information possible. My concern is that, as a council and as a city, do we want to sort of hopfrog or leapfrog this particular project above other projects? And specifically, I'm thinking about a performing arts center, which is something that we've looked at for a long time in this city, but I don't think we've had a feasibility study of, and which is desperately needed. Washington has a performing arts center, you know, and it attracts people. So my concern, again, it won't prevent me from supporting this study, my concern is if we're going to look at a sports complex, which, you know, which could result in this particular project leapfrogging above other projects, is there some way that we can have a more equitable approach, so we can say, what, what do we as a community most need? Is it a sports complex? Is it a performing arts center? Is it, I know we have a private aquatic center, and we have our aquatics and fitness center, but people have, have said, you know, we, we could really use a large aquatic center. In other words, is there any way, and I asked, you know, the city manager to weigh in on this, is there any way that as part of this, we could, we could say, is a sports center what we need? Can we look at other, other needs for our community, such as a performing arts center?
You know, I will say that I am very involved in youth sports right now, and from the standpoint of baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse, and several other sports, the biggest knock that I get, and the thing that I get complaints about the most, is people are sick and tired of going to Wilson, Rocky Mount, Goldsboro, and some of the other neighboring communities, because all the teams are here. They're going to play Greenville teams in different communities, and the city of Greenville's losing out on revenue for it. And so all these smaller communities around us have these complexes, but Greenville doesn't have it. And I've had more people from different, various sports, with all different backgrounds of people that are playing. Specifically, I've got friends that play soccer, and they said they're sick and tired of going around to different places when they could stay here at home and stay in their own homes, instead of paying absorbent fees to stay in hotels to watch their kids play a sport when they're playing Greenville teams. So I will say that there's a significant need, and I think it is a very equitable thing, because it's a vast majority of them. If you start creating rectangular fields, there's various sports that can play it, a huge assortment of it. And it doesn't cost a whole lot of money to play soccer, play baseball, play softball, lacrosse, and go out there and play in our own backyard.
Mayor, if I could just add, I think as it relates to a feasibility study, a feasibility study of a sports complex, indoor, outdoor, what the market is related to that is a very different animal than a feasibility study for a performing arts center. I think they're two completely different studies done by two completely different groups of people.
Well, could we, I guess what I'm interested in, and I appreciate Pete, the mayor's, Mayor Connolly's remarks about, you know, that seeing the need, and to some extent, that really is kind of more your milieu, maybe it's more Councilmember Robinson's milieu, maybe more my sort of wheelhouse is with, with arts and performing arts, so I'm aware of, of a need there. I would not want to take away from, from this feasibility study and moving forward with this. Is there a possibility to also do a feasibility study for a performing arts center?
I believe at some point, there was some study done about a performing arts center. I, I think a little, I got, I arrived in the city in August of 17, and I believe that there was some work done related to the performing arts center that ECU might have done. I'm happy to find that and, and talk to ECU about dusting that off.
Right. Can we dust it off, update it, and so?
Yeah, I, I don't know about updating, and I, I think it might be important, Councilmember Blackburn, to understand what that study said before we, before we talk about future steps.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, not, again, this is not an either-or proposition, but an and-and proposition. If we're gonna study a sports complex, let's study a performing arts center.
I think that's the prerogative of the council to make a decision.
I think, personally, I've been approached about this particular proposition, and other people have approached me about other propositions and suggested additional changes to the budget. It didn't happen all by, you know, suddenly, as a surprise on the dais. So I would encourage prior, before we make another present, another suggestion, that maybe we should talk a little bit about amongst ourselves about whether or not we're all into this. You know, as you made a proposition a couple weeks ago, and when I wasn't supportive of that, and now one of my colleagues, he's been talking about this for a few weeks, I think it takes some time to gather support around an idea, and I don't think there's, that time has been spent on this one.
Well, I didn't know we were gonna be voting on a study for sports complex tonight.
We're not. We're asking the manager to bring us ideas.
Well, we're voting on a study for a sports complex. I didn't, I wasn't aware we were gonna be voting on this tonight. And it's fine, again, I, I do support. I do not have the either-or mentality. I just feel like if we're gonna look at a sports complex, let's look at something else that we have talked about for this city as being needed and desirable and a source of income, which is a performing arts center.
Can we look at, can we review the current study that they have, and then revisit that once we know what, like you said, if you see that it needs to be updated, if you see that it needs, because there's already been one. It's what am I, am I, is that correct?
I, I, I will, I cannot speak to the content of the study. I believe that there was work done prior to my arrival at the city, and some discussion about a performing arts center that East Carolina did, but I certainly not.
So you're saying, you're not saying the city, East Carolina?
Right. But I, I can certainly not comment to the content of that.
Yeah. And I will say, I agree, and I know that there has been some discussion about performing arts center, and I would love to see one too. So, I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of people that have suggested it too, but I know at one point, there was some discussion of the university potentially exploring that, maybe even a joint partnership, I don't know, for the city or somebody else, but, you know, having some type of joint partnership. But, you know, the undertaking of a performing arts center is gonna need a lot of state capital, and I think that probably a discussion with a state agency, i.e. ECU, would be probably a good start to see where they're at before we go ahead and jump into doing a feasibility study on our own, when we could potentially talk to them first. I mean, that's just my opinion on it, and I would be all for it. I would love to see it, and I think it'd be great. I mean, I'm not gonna say that I saw something where there could be a potential performing arts location at one point, but keep in mind, that was years ago, and funding has changed dramatically from, from where it was years ago. But I would be all in favor, but I think we should probably look at what they have and use that as a starting point before we go ahead and just put a feasibility study into our own, because when I first got on the council, we did lots and lots of studies, and it would tick me off, because we'd do the study, and then we'd throw it away, and we'd never use it again. Before we make the allocation to do it, I think we probably better have some more information on it.
Yeah, no, that's a very, I'll use that word again, perspicacious observation. No, I appreciate that. I think that's very wise. Is it possible to find that report, we're just seven years old now, and have a presentation based on that report to council?
Councilmember Blackburn, I have not, it is a long time ago. What I would like to do is have conversations with ECU to see what's out there.
Okay.
And then from there, we can make, talk about next steps.
Okay. Good. That sounds good. All right.
Councilmember Bell?
Mayor, I'd like to call for a question on the properly seconded motion that's on the table.
All right.
Second.
I think it's already been seconded.
No, he, he's got a, he's got a second. Now we have to vote to call the question, or we could just, you could withdraw your motion, we could just vote.
All right. All right, good. I'll withdraw my motion. No other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we will go to the most anticipated item of the agenda tonight, the city manager's report.
Mayor, I would like to ask that the council cancel the May 22nd meeting.
That's exactly why I said this was the most anticipated.
I moved.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We have no meeting on May 22nd.
Right. Now, I do have one other item. So every summer, the city manager's office welcomes interns. These interns have sat through Monday's night's meetings, and tonight, I'd like them to stand up. And if you, I could, I would like to just make an introduction of our new interns. It is a great group of interns. You can, all can come forward. So first, we have Jordan Lynch. Come on up, Jordan. Jordan is from Rocky Mount. He is majoring in accounting at the University of Mount Olive, where he is also a member of the men's basketball team. He's volunteered at the Boys and Girls Club, the Mount Olive Park, worked with the City of Wilson as a recreation aide, and last summer completed an internship at Duke Raleigh Hospital. Welcome, Jordan.
Welcome, Jordan.
Okay, we have three more. Okay, we'll call forward Matthew Clino.
Speech? Did you prepare a speech?
Matthew is from Wilmington. He earned a bachelor's degree in political science and history from East Carolina and is working on his master's of public administration, along with his MBA coursework. He's studying to become proficient in Spanish, and is an avid outdoorsman and physical fitness enthusiast. And he's also volunteers with the Humane Society. Welcome, Matthew. Okay?
We don't get to have a lot of fun up here, guys. I trust, this is some of the best fun we have.
Now we'll call forward Mehak Raththorn. Mehak has a bachelor's degree in social development and policy from HABIB University, and is currently working on her master's of public administration at East Carolina University. She is from Karachi, Pakistan, which is the 12th largest city in the world, with a population of over 20 million people. She has a passion for local government, social, sustainable development, and increasing citizens' access to resource. Welcome, Mehak.
Hey, I got a quick, I got a quick question. How bad is the traffic in Greenville?
Not bad at all.
That's right. That's right. We don't have 20 million people.
Councilmember Blackburn, you have a graduate degree, don't you? What, what was that?
The MPA at ECU. Two of our interns are enrolled in that program, as well as one of our presenters this evening. How's his MPA from ECU?
So we have one more intern, Grace Fowler. Grace, Grace is from Salisbury. She earned a bachelor's degree in hospitality management from East Carolina and is currently working on her master's in business administration. She's received academic honors at ECU while also serving in leadership positions and being involved in planning special events. And with the city, she'll be working on planning and executing various special events for the city. Please enjoy. Thanks.
They also, they also served hot dogs today at the lunch.
They did. So this is the first.
That was outstanding.
This is the first week for this group of interns. They've sat through council meetings Monday and Thursday. You attended the Rec and Parks Committee, Commission meeting. I'm sure that by tomorrow, they're gonna be just sort of tired.
Did Rec and Parks give you guys a standing ovation? Let's see.
Okay, we will not. Come on back here. We're the better ones.
Yeah, they talk about fun, but we provide it.
So in June, we might see two or three.
They're, they're gonna quit next week, for sure.
They kept coming back. They kept coming back. So we're happy to have it.
Well, we're glad you're here.
It's a great group of interns. We're excited.[1640.33]
Thank you.
That's the report that I have made.
All right.
You know, let's do something a little bit different.
Let's call on our attorney, Mr. McGurk. An attorney, an attorney, a profession that bills by the hour, has no comment.
You've got something to say.
You don't want to wish anybody like a Happy Mother's Day?
Of course she does.
Yeah, I wish my dear wife, Dorothea, a Happy Mother's Day.
There we go.
There you go.
There we go, there we go.
You need to sleep in the house.
Teamwork, teamwork. Councilmember Daniels.
Oh, yay. I'd like to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day, those mothers who give birth biologically, those who gave birth in their heart, and I pray peace for those who have lost their mothers this Mother's Day. I would also like to say congratulations to Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Cam Smith. She obtained, she completed the Greenville-Pitt County Chamberlain's Leadership Institute. Yes. And also, I'd like to remind, I'd like to remind everyone that is, this is Historic Preservation Month, and that it was established in 1973 by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We will be having a ceremony here, with desserts, and pictures, and all kinds of things, the 26, I'm sorry, the 23rd, at 6 o'clock here at City Hall. And also, my last but not least, next week, we will, is National Police Week. Monday, we will start to recognize those police officers that were lost in the line of, that lost their lives in the line of duty. So Chief Salz and Deputy Chief Ivy have presented something for me, and I thank you in advance, and that says, National Police Week started in 1962, when President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. This week is designed, wait a minute, he then proclaimed the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. This week is designed to honor our public services, servants, who have given their lives and service to their communities. Tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world converge on Washington DC to participate in a number of planned events, which honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Locally, the Greenville Police Department has plans to honor our officers. We have four plus one K-9 who passed in the line of duty. They have started with the send-off of law enforcement, united bicycle teams on Sunday morning, members who will make the ride from Raleigh to Washington DC to support the families of our fallen, and pay, and pay their respects, excuse me. Our Recreation and Parks Department will light the bridge in honor of those who have lost their lives. A presentation will be made to the, made to the handler of K-9 Pepper, in his memory. Various videos will be circulated to share with the department and their families, and we will fly out flags at half-staff, and remember of those fallen officers. Thank you.
Very nice, very nice. Councilmember Blackburn.
That's very difficult to follow. I would just like to make mention of it being, we are truly in the height of kitten season, and kitten season is not fun, like Christmas season and other holiday seasons. Kitten season is when all of those stray cats start having kittens, and often, they are overpopulated, and they overrun areas, and there can be just all kinds of issues, diseases, and inbreeding, and it's just not a good thing. So what I am pleading with our community, as always, I'm always pleading with the community when it comes to animals, is when you see a stray cat, if you can, have that cat sterilized. Make sure, of course, it doesn't belong to somebody, but if it belongs to somebody, they should have had it, had him or her sterilized. If you see an animal that doesn't seem to be taken care of, you know, I see posts on social media, someone, please help this cat, we are somebody. We have to take responsibility for these animals, because it's a life of misery for the animals and for their kittens. So that's my plea to the community, this kitten season, please look out for stray cats, cats that do not have a home, and please get them sterilized. It's very affordable, if you go to Spade Day, you can get a $20 certificate, $20. The other aspect to kitten season, is there are a lot of little families out there, living on the streets, living in horrible circumstances. Sometimes moms, the mother cats are killed, and then the babies, you know, will die, will perish. If you see kittens, and you don't see anyone taking care of them, make sure someone's not taking care of them before you move them, or move the whole family, bring them into your bathroom, take care of that little family. And then if you're unable to keep them, please consider keeping one or two of the kittens. But if you can't, call me, no, don't. Have the decency to try to find a home for these cats. Go to the Pitt County Animal Shelter, they're wonderful people. Our animal, animal protective services can help you, and the Humane Society may or may not be able to help you, they get up to capacity pretty quick. So that's just sort of a plea for kitten season, please help these cats out there that really don't have anybody else looking out for them. And if you see a litter of kittens, please try to protect those kittens, and get them somewhere better than where they are, which is the streets. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Blackburn, I'd like to nominate you to catch all the little cats that, when they tore the, the Frisell House down, that were living in that house. There's a lot of little cats over in my neighborhood. So anytime you want to, you can come catch them, I'm scared of cats.
They need to be trapped. We'll work on that.
Councilmember Smiley.
I'm going to break form here, and.
All right.
I live with three women, all of which are extraordinary, and two of, I was going to say that two of them are mothers.
So we got other news?
No, but I'm going to, since my daughter adopted a kitten.
There you go.
Couple of weeks ago, that showed up on the front porch, and, so I'm going to give her credit too, she's got her own, and she's treating it like a newborn. So I just want to say.
As she should.
Yes, yes, it's, and she's very, 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 very careful with it. So I'm going to say Happy Mother's Day to all the extraordinary women in my family. And my daughter is Andy Smiley, my wife is Jessie Smiley, and my mom, who I know very few of you have ever met, is Candace Pierce. So, thank you very much.
Very, very tiring, kind of shy.
She, she bore the best child, right?
Don't ask her that today.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to wish a Happy Mother's Day to my wife, my mother, and all the women on the dais that have had children of their own. I know that being a mother is not really easy, a lot of times, you carry a lot of the weight, and, you know, sometimes aren't compensated for it, or not thanked enough, for whatever the case may be. So thank you all for everything you've done. Y'all are awesome. So, that's it.
Councilmember Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. To all the mothers on, on this council, and also to all the mothers in our city staff, Happy Mother's Day. To all the mothers out there that are watching us, and watching the replays, Happy Mother's Day. We celebrate you on Sunday, but we thank you for every day of the year, because it's, it's not just Sunday, it's every single day. I have three children, I have the best mother there could ever be, my wife, I love her to death. We're going to celebrate her Sunday. Honey, if you're watching, I love you, I said that publicly. Happy Mother's Day.
Everybody's left.
Thank you for what you do for us every day, and she's really carried a yewens right. Some of you know I've had surgery, so I was a big baby for about two weeks, she took good care of me. And my youngest daughter just came home from college, and she had her wisdom teeth cut out, so she was a big baby like me. So my wife's had a really good, some, probably some really good help to us. So thank you for being such a great mom. And again, the mothers are really the glue that keep the families together every day, and I appreciate all the mothers out there. So Happy Mother's Day.
All right.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Glover.
I'd like to wish all the mothers Happy Birthday. It's time to go home. Happy Mother's Day, and to all the great mothers who are employed by the city, I'd like to wish them a Happy Mother's Day, and to my friends and family, and the people that I have clung to for a long time, for Mother's Day. I'd like to wish all of them Happy Mother's Day, and have a great one. That's, I'd like to wish my husband's mother Happy Mother's Day, because the whole while I was in school, he was a mom and a dad, and our kids were saying, Mama, we're so tired of chicken and pork chops. So he was a good dad, he was a good dad, so he took a mother's place while I was in school, so, thank you, honey.
All right. First and foremost, I want to say, May is National Preservation Month, and like Councilmember Daniels had said, I am very fortunate to be in the role that I'm in, and they give me these great, great powers to create these proclamations. And so I am going to proclaim, May is National Preservation Month, and I'm going to be present, I believe, on the 23rd. There's only one little caveat, sorry, Ms. Pierce, if I have a softball game, I may or may not be there, so, but it's a very special month, and I hope everybody will celebrate it. Also, I want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, specifically, I'd like to say Happy Mother's Day to my mother, who's up in Wisconsin right now, and also Happy Mother's Day to my wife, like all the other council members have said, that they are the glue of the family, and they do so much for us, so thank you. And then finally, I want to say, kind of on the note of being, being involved with softball, I have found that softball is just an unbelievable thing for me. I never thought that I would ever get involved in softball. Having two girls, I didn't know if they'd ever get excited about softball, but, you know, it has been an absolute pleasure and honor for me to be involved in being a coach to 11 little girls that are 10, 11 years old, and I have enjoyed it as much or more than they have. And I highly recommend that anybody that wants to get involved, and wants to make a difference in your community, get involved in some type of extracurricular activity with children. I think it's a great way for you to be able to positively influence them, teach them life lessons that they will take for the rest of their lives, you know, going through different situations, trials, and tribulations, through games, through seasons, understanding that, you know, good things are going to happen, bad things are going to happen, you know, and staying a course, and keeping your head up, and working hard, and achieving goals is extremely important. And being able to get involved with that, I can't, I can't recommend enough that people get involved with that, because you may think that you're helping out children, but you're also helping out yourself too, because I think it helps you stay involved, and it helps you be able to pass along things that you've learned for many, many years. I've learned from people all ages, different things in life, that now I'm able to pass on to kids that may not know it. And it's been awesome to be able to take my experience playing baseball, and teach it to these girls, that, you know, they look at me and they say, what's a, what's an AB? It's an at-bat. And they're like, I'm like, to me, that's a simple thing, but, you know, teaching them games, and teaching them situations, and things like that. So I highly recommend anybody out there in the community that wants to get involved, you know, definitely get involved, and go out there and help mentor young kids, and you'll, you'll see a huge positive impact for them, but you'll also see a huge impact for you as well, so, just a recommendation for everybody. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six to eight.
We are adjourned.